The program is 55 and older, city resident, within 125% of the Health and Human Services poverty level and unemployed. So when they come into the program, they have to be unemployed at the time of entry and while they're in the program. It's designed as a transition from unemployment to employment. That's our goal. We wish we could say we got 100% of our seniors employed by the time they left the program. Unfortunately, we've got a lot of barriers that we try to overcome, and not the least of which is age discrimination. But we do our best to try and help disadvantaged seniors move on.
Okay, so it's 39 seniors we're talking about that are eligible for this. How long of a program is it for them? And what kind of a compensation does a senior get that might be watching this program that's 55? I don't consider 55 a senior, I'm 64, but I will admit that we have a lot of people unemployed who are in their 50s and 60s, and I dare say in their 70s, who need to be employed. Go ahead.
The stimulus program will only last to June 30th of 2010, unfortunately. So those that enter under this ARE program will only be in the program for one year approximately, a little over one year if we can get the money.
And if you get that in the 39 of them, how much money would each person be getting? Or what kind of support would they be getting during that period of time?
They get the $8 per hour California wage for their stipend, for their expenses. They are allowed to have, when they come into our program, it's a little bit more liberal as far as our determination of eligibility. So if they have social security or a small pension, that's okay. We don't exclude that. Some of the other government programs are quite strict in that regard.
Okay, if I was watching this and I'm one of those folks who would desperately like to get in touch with you right now, what would they do? How would they contact you?
They could call our office. One of my staff or myself would talk to them personally. We'd explain the program. It's not for everyone, but for many of them it is.
Two quick questions. Give us your phone number.
Sure. Our front desk is (213) 252-4000. And just ask for the Title V division, and I'll get someone who can help them out.
Could I also get a fact sheet on this, which I would like to give to my community folks, various senior groups and others?
Sure.
That they could become aware that this program exists. I think we should get the word out as quickly as possible.
Sure, absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. President, on the Street, Parks.
I'm just concerned on the item two. And the frustration we have to think about, if we train people and then there's no commitment for employment, it's just a minor kind of bump that they get by with a stipend. And it would appear with the work source centers and particularly city employment that we're talking about, that we should have more of a smaller circle to say there's at least a commitment for, out of these 200, a commitment that a portion of them are going to get employment. Because that's what this whole deal is, is not a stipend for a short time. And the last thing we want to do is what we've done for years is train people and tell them, "Okay, you've trained, let's get the next group in," and we don't see where it takes them. And I would just like to see that we tighten that up, particularly with the work source centers or city jobs, that we make a commitment that some of these 200 are going to be given a job. Otherwise, why train them? You know, and, you know, seniors, I think we have to look at them differently than young kids coming out of school where you can do an intern and they're trying to figure out what they want to do. Seniors are in a position that they need a job. They don't need just to be trained and sent back where they are. So that's where we need to tighten up and see how we can close that loop and say, you know, 50% of them will get a job, or 20% or something, to make it worth their while to go through the training, or make it worth our while to spend a half a million dollars.
Typically, in our regular program, before we actually place a senior at a site, whether it be a government site or a nonprofit, we ask if there is that possibility that they will be hired. And Charles' group does monitor that. And so essentially, they know based on past practice which host sites have a habit of actually hiring when they have the ability. So we kind of focus follow-up placements within those sites, because it's to our benefit as well as to seniors.
Couldn't we make it as part of the requirement to be designated as a host site, that they make a commitment to hire people?
I would love that, if we could have...
I mean, it seems like if we're going to spend the money, we're helping them as a host site, it would appear that they would leverage that and make some commitment of employment.
We can go ahead and try and put that, we'll put that as a requirement in and see what type of agreements we can arrange.
And I don't think we're unrealistic to say it's got to be 100%, but I'd hate to see us train 200 people, and when the money runs out, there's 200 people saying, "What do you want to train me on next? Because I need another stipend." I mean, the issues for them to transfer into a job.
We'll make that part of the negotiations before we place someone under this program.
You can give additional points or something, you know? That way it's not, you can give additional points or something, it's not a requirement in case we can't get 100% compliance, but it would give incentive for that.
Okay.
All right, I will move number two to accept that grant if there's no objection. That will be the order of the committee. Number three?
The next site, the next item is a request to accept $1.1 million in nutrition funds. Unlike the previous item, no application was submitted. This essentially was a formula grant where the California Department of Aging received its federal share and then notified us of our share. The guidance from CDA for the use of these funds is mainly to provide, to restore meal services, to restore hours of service, and where possible, expand to meet the increasing need for senior meal services. And so we're basically taking this money and allocating it to our existing nutrition providers. We've suffered about $147,000 reduction in the past year in state funding for home-delivered meals, and I think about another $97,000 in dining center meals, plus a 10% increase in our total cost. So this will go a long ways to covering all of that.
Got you, okay. Seems straightforward. Any questions on the nutrition grant acceptance? I'll move that as well. Thank you very much, appreciate it. If you can take up item four, please? And that will be in council colleagues as well, so. Is there anyone here for item four?
Did we talk about the nutritional program at all? Because that was...
Yeah, it was just a formula grant that we got that will restore some of the existing programs that we have, basically.
Okay, so we already know the pipeline where that money will go in?
It's an existing one. They said it had been cut a little bit by other things and say this will restore some of it.
So this means seniors will be able to get a more nutritional meal with $1,113,000.
Exactly.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Just awaiting the Community Development Department. Okay, colleagues, this is $19,258,184 in Community Development Block Grant Funds as part of ARA. It's in addition to our usual block grant allocation. And they have the ARA's Office and Community Development Department here to discuss this. This was heard in the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee earlier this week. Good morning.
Good morning. Wanda Gaston, Mayor's Office of Housing and Economic Opportunity.
David Asparza, Assistant General Manager, Community Development Department.
Thank you. What's provided this morning for your consideration and necessary action are the recommendations from the mayor to deploy the Community Development Block Grant Funding awarded to the city under ARA. As the president just said, the total award is $19.26 million. And regulations released earlier this month, I believe it was May 6th, had strongly urged CDBGR grantees to program the funds consistent with the legislative intent of ARA. As you may be aware, CDBG can be broadly used, but they're asking us to more narrowly define that to hard development and emphasize job creation and preservation through infrastructure activities. To ensure that we met that criteria, the mayor convened a working group comprised of representatives of his office, the council, CLA, CAO, and the Community Development Department. And the mayor charged that team to develop the program priorities and develop the funding recommendations you have before you. The recommendations provide a mix of economic development, total allocation of about 40% of the funds go into that category, housing, community improvement, and public services that will increase the city's capacity to assist individuals and families hardest hit by the current economic climate. The city's application is due to HUD on June 5th. As part of the submission requirements, the city had to undertake a public participation process. A seven-day public comment period was required. This culminated last Wednesday with a community hearing that was held at the Echo Park Library. There was a good turnout of residents and community organizations that not only commented on the proposed budget, but also spoke to the need for additional funding for community-based work. The CDD is in the process of collating and summarizing those comments, and will provide them to the council and also post them on the city's recovery website as required by the program guidelines. Currently, CDD is undergoing a review process for all of the line items. We weren't given very much time in order to prepare a budget. Again, the regulations were released on the 6th, and we need to finalize the entire budget by the end of this month. They're trying to determine an appropriate methodology for calculating a reasonable number of jobs for each line item in terms of the city's investment in particular projects. What was handed out this morning, and I hope all of the members have it, was a revised listing of the proposed funding line items. And we've updated the jobs related to that. This is about the fifth iteration of that document. It continues to evolve as more information becomes available to the department. I'm sure David will share more information on that process in just a minute. But what I want to point out to you is that in that document, you'll see that mainly the job creation is demonstrated in the economic development category, which is not uncommon for CDBG. The normal public benefit test that HUD requires of the city in terms of creating jobs, which means for every $35,000 that we would expend in CDBG, we'd have to create one job, that requirement has been waived. However, HUD still expects the city to come in with a reasonable number of jobs, and that's what CDD is working toward with CRA. However, if we were to use that calculation for this program, the number of jobs that would be required for the city's $19.2 million is 551. As you can see on the document before you, the city stands to realize about 2,500 permanent jobs exceeding the regular CDBG requirement by some 354%. Those numbers may change up or down a little depending on the final outcome of CDD's review. But we wanted to make sure that the committee was aware that that document will continue to evolve until we do the final submission to HUD. Within the public services category, we anticipate temporary employment gains for youth and young adults, and also in the long term, expect to target underemployed and underserved areas of the cities by generating job opportunities through the City Works Academy and First Source Hiring Program. Similarly, a number of construction-related job opportunities are anticipated within the housing category. Notwithstanding all of the job needs, the mayor recognizes the impact of the recession, goes well beyond rising unemployment. The demand for public services has increased, and intuitively, I would say that the level of persons living below poverty is also increasing. So to the extent that we could address some of those related needs, the working group, together with the mayor's office, put forward some recommendations that would not actually generate jobs, but would go forward in assisting families through obstacles that they may have as a result of the recession. Included is providing rental assistance to qualified homeless persons by leveraging the ESG program that's going to be managed by LASSA. Under the LASSA program, they are only allowed to target very low-income families or folks that are at or below 50% AMI. By blending those dollars with CDBG, we'll be able to expand the eligibility and assist persons with income up to 80% AMI. Additionally, we're looking to coordinate foreclosure prevention service delivery in the city and provide information and referral to residents who unfortunately are close to or may have already lost their homes. This is an expansion of the program began under the city's NSP program and hopefully will be further leveraged if the housing department is successful in its competitive application. However, to accomplish all of the things that we want to do under the public services, the city must request a waiver of the 15% expenditure limit. That's normally within the CDBG program, and instead, request that there be an allowance for a rate of 25% under this program. This policy change would allow the city to expend $4.8 million rather than $2.9, an increase of about 65% in that particular category. On Wednesday, when we appeared before HCED, I intended to bring the message to members that there was a slight chance that the waiver would not be granted. However, I think that may have been interpreted by some as that there was no opportunity for the waiver. That is not the case. I'd like to underscore that the mayor will make the request to the HUD secretary, but again, it's quite possible that that would not be granted. If that is the case, and the mayor's transmitted to the council, he suggested that the CDD report back immediately to both his office and to the council, and that we convene the working group to determine how to best reallocate those funds within the economic development category for projects that are shovel-ready and can deliver maximum job opportunities to our communities.
And on the economic development front, what is the timeline that these projects have to qualify? And is there backup force, as we've experienced many years with block grant economic development projects? Some actually say they're ready and are ready, and others say they're ready and have unforeseen delays. What is that timeline? If we don't hit the timeline with some of them, do we have a series of backup projects or other things that we're looking at?
According to the HUD guidance, they've suggested a program goal of the projects being ready to be initiated 120 days after the funds become available to the city. Assuming that the city's application goes forward in June and HUD responds and approves that plan in July, we'd have to have projects ready to go and dig dirt by November and actually be completed by September 30th, 2012. CDD is in the process of ensuring that all the line items in the budget actually meet that criteria. The working group that came together to determine those actually looked at all of the economic development projects that are on the table at the city to determine those that best met that criteria. CDD is, again, just trying to verify that that is indeed the case. But we would, if any of those projects do not prove to meet the implementation timeline required, we would have the working group look to have substitute projects come forward, and we would bring that back to committee.
Thank you. Yes, and colleagues, since we're about four minutes before, and we're going to have this in council, we'll go up to the hour, and then I think we'll cut off for the council meeting, and we'll be taking this up again in council. So go ahead, Ms. Hahn.
Okay, this is one of those issues, colleagues, and I know we didn't want to get into, you know, divvying up these dollars, you know, but that's where we're at, and this is what it's about. And I guess my first very quick question, and then I'll follow up on it, is how did you allocate the dollar amount to each project?
It was depending upon the request from the proponents of the projects. They actually came in with a request and a budget attached to it. We then asked our team, CDD, underwriting team, as well as CRA, to prove up those budgets. If we weren't able to determine that there were sufficient costs associated with the request, we scaled back on particular projects and we increased...
And here's what I'm going to tell you, colleagues, and if you guys can help me figure this out, it would be huge for South Los Angeles. There's a project called Lancet, which has been on the books, according to another project since John Gibson. It, according to your own numbers, will create 360 jobs in South Los Angeles. It'll create light industrial, this is exactly what we want to do. We requested 1.75 to, that would complete this project. It would be one of the greatest stimulus to the economy in South Los Angeles that I can actually remember. But for you to bump up back to the 1.75, which we asked for and was scaled back, you can see where I'm going. It's going to have to take from some of the other projects. But I just don't see how we can look each other in the eye when we're talking about creating jobs and stimulating the economy and not maybe massage this a little bit and look at the ones that are not creating the jobs? And see if there was any way we could get Lancet back up to the 1.75, which we requested? That will complete it, it's ready to go, it's shovel-ready. This is a project that I think, again, I remember when Mark Ridley Thomas left here, he willed it over to me in the redistricting and said, "You've got to complete this project." This is one of those that I think is a poster child for the economic stimulus dollars. It's shovel-ready, it will create light industrial, 360 jobs, stimulate the economy, but I would have to have everybody's willingness to maybe massage this list to see if we could get back up to the 1.75 that we requested.
Well, this is part of the issue here. We talked about this in HCED as well. I mean, there's different types of jobs here as well. There's different projects that have had many subsidies in the past. Lancet's one of them, West Angeles is one of them. We've looked at a number of these projects, and sometimes, you know, we've also had the promise in the past, all we need is another million bucks and it's ready to go. So some of what we look at, obviously, in these jobs, there's also a couple of things here that may not come through, and I know Ms. Perry wanted to speak on the rail car manufacturing, for instance. We don't know whether, that's hanging by a thread whether or not MTA will have that contract or not.
But I think for Ms. Perry...
They've hunted that, and that's a million dollars there.
This is about local hire. I mean, 360 good jobs. So, I mean, I would like to move that we could amend this report and see if we couldn't bump the Lancet project back up to where we requested, which was 1.75. We got backup material, we know that this is the money that can complete this...
Because it is zero-sum, I would ask that if you do that, then you would say where?
Yeah, I know, I was going to ask, I don't want to, I mean, I'm not going to take it.
No, I mean, not that...
I don't have another project on here.
Yeah.
So...
Well, let's hold on that. We can work on that also between now and the full council. Mr. President?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Ms. Hahn isn't the only one who feels an advocacy role for her constituents. I have the same, obviously, one. And we've had great support from Larry Frank and Meg Barkley of our two different departments. They've sat in the room, Ms. Hahn, over the $19 million. There's $4 million I need for Lincoln Place. I can get my tenants back in, I can rehab all those buildings, we can get that behind us. It's incredible, affordable housing, it's jobs, it's awesome. But once again, we, like you, are not on this list, so we'll see where we go. I think there were like $100 million worth of requests for the $19 million.
Yeah, I know.
That's how serious it is.
I know.
And we, as a great city, should be getting more, but I just want to thank those folks for helping me with Lincoln Place, but we would like that same support you do, so you and I can fight together.
Right.
But we might have to find other pots of money to do it in.
Right. Or could we just ask the CAO to just maybe look at this list again and come back with any possible suggestion on how to get Lancet back to the 1.75 that we requested?
We're going to have, I think, also some information this week from the state on the housing. If you look at this one, the housing one, whether the TOD stuff qualifies, so we may have some additional money if things don't there. So that's a place to, at least on the housing.
Just a recommendation, again, it would be the will of this committee, certainly. But I would like to make that request.
Okay, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President?
Let me just ask, how quickly do you think we'll hear back on the 15% to 25% debate? Because we've asked that question tons of times and we've gotten rejected.
I'm not sure of the timing on that. I would defer to our lobby team to actually speak, but my understanding is the mayor's having a conversation with the secretary, and we're also backing that up with a letter request, but the conversations back in DC are ongoing right now.
So is that a formal, there's no deadline for it? It's a person-to-person contact. We also have some contact with the housing secretary and can supplement that as well with the mayor's.
So the likelihood this package will move forward without that information?
It may go through HUD without the actual waiver being granted, which is the caution that I gave earlier, and if that's the case, we would want to amend the package to move money to economic development.
I would just like to ask and support Ms. Hahn on this and that. And looking at Lancet, it really is at the center of three districts that are in significant poverty, lack of jobs, and a variety of things. And it's only been 30 years since we've talked about Lancet, and it's one of those things that another $700,000 to put 300 people to work permanently would be a great investment. In fact, I think it's something that all of us would jump at, and we don't have a dog in the fight because we have no projects, but we certainly would support her effort in giving that additional money.
And just to clarify, if your estimate is 300 with $1 million, are there actually 300 jobs with $1 million?
I would defer to the CDD underwriting team.
This project, the market area is very weak, and rents are very low. Therefore, conventional financing amount is very small. We do have approval for $6.08 million with 108, and $950,000 Betty Grant. However, during the next five years...
108 is a great...
The underground waters of this site are contaminated, needs to be remediated, and that costs over a million dollars. So that's absorbing a significant portion of the grant that we have received. The project without additional subsidy, gap funding, is not feasible. $6.08 million loan is an actual loan, we can subordinate to first mortgage, but the amount of the loan we can get on this project is very small. This project requires substantial amount of gap, and we have calculated that at 1.75, close to $2 million in fact. As far as the job creation, the $6 million...
So just to stop there, if you get a million, do we create zero jobs, in your opinion? If we allocate just $1 million and not 1.75, do we actually do anything?
We'll do good, of course, because the project can be built in components. Instead of building all nine buildings at the same time, we can build three buildings, four buildings, and we can do project, but the project will not finish. It will not be a comprehensive project.
1.75 will finish it.
I hope I have answered the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Perry?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I asked about this item at Wednesday's HCED committee, and wanted to follow up since MTA board considered it yesterday, and it's the item involving Ansaldo Brea rail car manufacturing facility. It was referred to in the CDD report, I think it was item 13, under the economic development section. It's a clean tech manufacturing senate proposal. And for the record, and I see Mr. Hollis is approaching, can you refresh us as to the action the MTA board took yesterday?
Looks like a lot of jobs.
Yes, ma'am. The MTA board yesterday...
Name for the record?
I'm sorry, my name is Cal Hollis, I'm with the redevelopment agency. The action the MTA board took yesterday was to direct its staff to continue negotiations with Ansaldo Brea with respect to a $300 million performance guarantee that the company has offered in conjunction with the extension of their option to deliver 100 rail cars.
Okay, now, it's my understanding that the site was to go out to RFP, but I also believe that last week, CRA, a redevelopment agency commission, approved an exclusive negotiating agreement with Ansaldo Brea. Is that correct?
The board approved an exclusive negotiation agreement that is for a portion of the site, approximately 14 of the 20 acres. And that exclusive negotiating agreement is conditioned upon the MTA exercising its option. We have prepared an RFP, and it's been held pending the action of the MTA.
So we're in the continuum of all that. We're proposing to allocate about $1 million in CDBG recovery funds, and this situation is still not clear. Based on what you said, it sounds like the MTA hasn't taken its final action. Your RFP is contingent upon that final action. Please correct me if I'm stating this incorrectly. So I'm questioning the wisdom of allocating funds for a project that has not yet gone through the administrative process of approval, although they need to be spent 120 days. We have a sort of an either-or situation pending, based on what you said in committee the other day, which is some or part, all or part of the site may be put out to RFP, but the overriding thread here is that it's contingent on MTA action. Is that, am I right about that?
Council member, the proposed funding for this project is really, is not contingent upon the Ansaldo Brea project. This is to provide better access to the entire 20 acres.
No, but it's contingent, Ansaldo Brea is contingent on MTA's decision. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And if we follow your logic that an ENA was approved by the board for 14 out of 20 of the acres last week?
That's correct.
So if I follow your logic... So if I follow your logic, since that's an exclusive negotiating agreement, which means exclusive, leaves six acres remaining to be put out to RFP if MTA does approve Ansaldo Brea in its final action. So they will be the majority entity on the site if MTA approves them. Correct?
That is correct. And if we do not, and if we, if, the intent for that million dollars is to improve the entire project, whether Ansaldo Brea is on the property or not, we would go forward with additional acquisition to improve the usability of the property. It is not tied to the Ansaldo Brea contract.
Yeah, I'll tell you what. Why don't we stick around? We'll take this up in council.
Thank you.
Go into greater detail then.
Hey, colleagues, we're gonna begin our council meeting. We know a lot of folks are here for that. Thank you. This has been a meeting of the ad hoc committee. What we will do is forward without recommendation right now.
Okay.
And we'll take that up. Also, one last note. This is due June 5th to HUD. We might know as early as today on some of the transit-oriented district housing funding, so if we do, we do have the option of continuing this in council till Tuesday, which would give us time to see whether all of that money went through as well, and whether some of that's freed up. So just as a point of information. And you guys can take probably about a two-hour break, because we'll be doing presentations and all that, but we'll see you back here for the full one in a little bit. Thank you. This meeting of the ad hoc committee on reinvestment Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and we are in the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Friday, May 29, 2009. We're here in the council chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35 and those members of the public who have joined us today. Each Friday, we begin the meeting with a very special set of presentations of individuals and notable dates or occasions to commemorate, and council presentations on behalf of the entire city of Los Angeles, and this Friday is no different. So I'd like to recognize for our first presentation, Councilmember Dennis Zine. And if I can ask folks to move their conversations elsewhere, shh, so we can hear the presentations. Mr. Zine will do our first presentation from Council District 3.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning. Joining me is Maggie Wayland, who's the general manager of the...
Los Angeles City Personnel Department?
The microphone's working.
Good.
You can hold on there. We had a nice round table, shall we say, a huge round table this morning, outside on the Spring Street of City Hall, where we recognized the city employee career service award recipients. And we gave the plaques, met the families, introduced everyone, and heard about their accomplishments and their success in achieving that honor of the career service award. Today, we are going to introduce them to you, the department that they are from, a variety of activities have brought these folks forward, all dedicated city employees, tremendous amount of experience and service to the people of Los Angeles. Many of them are with their guests, their loved ones, their relatives, following the introduction here in council to the recipients. We're going to go to the media room and do additional photographs with their family members. So, we did the 8:30 till about 9:30 this morning, so we'll go from about 10:00 to 11:30 here in council chambers for you, Mr. President. I'm just kidding you. Now, we'll do this in an expeditious manner. So what we have today is the 2008 civilian career service award recipients. We're honoring 38 recipients for their exemplary service to the city of Los Angeles and the people of Los Angeles, and honoring these outstanding employees. We're recognizing all city employees for their dedication, innovation, courage, and pride. And I will give the department that the individuals are from, we want to get them on camera, and Maggie has a portable microphone, we will have them introduce themselves, but we will give the department, and we have them all lined up, and then from here, we'll go into the back room for photographs. So the first is the medical records supervisor from Personnel Department.
Carolyn Alvarez, representing Personnel Medical Service Division.
Carolyn. Construction interceptor, Department of Public Works Bureau of Contract Administration.
Joe Arena from the Department of Public Works Bureau of Contract Administration.
Thank you, Joseph. Our next recipient is Principal Construction Inspector, Department of Public Works Bureau of Contract Administration.
Yes, I'm Gary Bigelow, Principal Construction Inspector with Bureau of Contract Administration.
And how many years of service do you have, Gary?
Pardon?
How many years with the city?
26.
26 years of service. Thank you, Gary. Our next recipient, Environmental Engineering Associate for Department of Public Works Bureau of Sanitation.
Good morning. My name is Hubertus Cox, Watership Protection Division.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Our next recipient, Engineering Designer 2, Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering.
My name is Andres La Cruz, Engineering Designer of Street Improvement and Stormwater Division.
Thank you. Our next recipient is the Senior Police Service Representative from the Los Angeles Police Department.
My name is Rhonda Johnson. I represent Los Angeles Police Department, X Division.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Our next recipient is a very familiar face around the city council chambers. Everyone sees her every day. They watch council meetings. Legislative Analyst 2, Office of the City Clerk.
Maria Kostrensich, City Clerk's Office.
All right, Maria. Now, get to work over there. Thank you. Our next recipient is Geographical Information System Specialist, Bureau of Public Works Bureau of Street Lighting.
Hello, everyone. My name is Roger Maraschega, Department of Public Works Bureau of Streetlights.
Roger, thank you. Our next recipient is Senior Management Analyst 2, Office of Finance, the man who brings in the money.
Mark O'Brien, Office of Finance, Revenue Management Division, Citywide Collection Program.
Thank you. Building, Construction, and Maintenance General Superintendent 1, Department of General Services.
Yeah, Bill Olger, Construction Division, GST.
Thank you, Bill. I said earlier in the presentation, the man everyone loves to hate. The Chief Parking Enforcement Operation, Department of Transportation. Obviously, we love this man.
Good morning. I'm Jimmy Price, Department of Transportation, Chief of the Bureau of Parking Enforcement and Traffic Control.
All right, Jimmy.
And judging by the number of enthusiastic traffic officers we have here today, this is the one 10-minute space that Angelinos won't get a ticket.
That's right. That's right. Animal Control Officer 2, Animal Services Division.
Gregory Randall, thank you very much, Wildlife Specialist, City of Los Angeles, Animal Services.
Thank you, Greg. Department of Water and Power, Electrical Engineering Associate.
Good morning, Jeff Rollick, Department of Water and Power, Energy Support Services.
Thank you, Greg. Jeffrey. Our next is Department of Water and Power, Customer Service Representative.
Gregory Silva, Department of Water and Power, City Attorney's Office and Customer Services.
Thank you, Gregory.
Thank you.
Department of Recs and Parks, Recreation Facility Director.
Good morning. My name is Carl Stevens, Director of William Nickerson Recreation Center, CD 15.
And also acknowledge that some of the general managers, John Moncrief is here from the Department of Recs and Parks, and I know Peter Robinson is also here from Department of Transportation, and there's some other general managers that are joining us today, recognizing that they're workers, they're employees. Department of Public Works Bureau of Sanitation, Civil Engineering Associate 4.
Good morning, Peter Taunta. Truly honored to be here this morning.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
From the Harbor Department, Communications Engineer.
Good morning. My name is Raul Velasco, Part Member of the Harbor Department, Representing Port Police.
Los Angeles World Airports, Chief of Airport Planning.
Good morning, Richard Wells. I'm the Division Manager of Airports and Facilities Planning Division at Los Angeles World Airports.
A former member of the city family, Community Program Assistant 3, Department of Aging.
Good morning. My name's Erin Westfall.
Thank you, Erin. Department of Transportation, Transportation to Engineering Associate 4.
Jim Williams, Department of Transportation, ATSA Construction Division.
Now, we have acts of heroism. These two gentlemen saved an individual who was being attacked. We have from the wastewater collection worker.
Hi, my name is Byron Tate, and no layoffs, please.
Thank you.
And we have also wastewater collection worker 2, Department of Public Works Bureau of Sanitation.
Simbora Wright, no mandatory furloughs, please.
Thank you. And this group is being honored for recognition received from the city department or other governmental agencies for extraordinary services. We have Environmental Specialist 3, Department of Public Works Bureau of Sanitation.
Good morning. My name is Chukufi Marashi. I'm environmental scientist. Honored to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next recipient, Management Analyst 2, Department of Public Works Bureau of Contract Administration.
Good morning, Manny Perez, Management Analyst with the Bureau of Contract Administration.
Thank you. All right, Manny. And we have outstanding teamwork, Field Enforcement, Emergency Response Team, our first recipients, three representatives from the Department of Animal Services.
Good morning. I'm Hugh Briefman, Department of Animal Services, Field Enforcement.
Good morning, Stacy Dancy, Department of Animal Services, also Field Enforcement.
Good morning, Officer Chris Carroll, Training Division and Emergency Preparedness.
Thank you. And those animal services representatives rescued over 500 animals at the recent fires we had in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Our next group, Online Notification Team, representatives from the Public Works Bureau of Contract Administration.
Good morning, James Cassley, Bureau of Contract Administration.
Good morning, Tom Kassauer, Special Construction Inspector, Bureau of Contract Administration. Thank you.
Abraham Malik, Bureau of Contract Administration, Public Works.
Good morning, Greg Meredith, Senior Systems Analyst, Bureau of Contract Administration.
Bruce Myers, Senior Construction Inspector, Contract Administration.
Good morning, Charlie Memm, Chief Construction Inspector, Valley Construction Division, Bureau of Contract Administration.
Charlie Memm, a familiar face in city council chambers. And we have from Public Works Bureau of Engineering.
My name is Isam Amraghi with the Bureau of Engineering, Department of Public Works. I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
Clark Robbins, Deputy City Engineer, 45th year of service. Will start next month. Most of that time I have spent looking over and preserving Tom Labon's bridges.
And our final recipient is affectionately known as the Los Angeles City Mad Scientist.
Well, I don't know if I'm mad or not, but my name is Popkin Holosapien, and I'm with General Services Department, Standards Testing Laboratories.
Test all the materials that are used in city operations.
Thank you.
Thank you. These 2008 civilian career service award recipients are outstanding examples of all the city employees. On behalf of the mayor of the city council and the 40,000-plus city employees, it's my pleasure, along with Maggie Wayland, the general manager of Department of Personnel, to congratulate you and say thank you for your exceptional service to the people of Los Angeles. Let's all applaud these wonderful representatives from the Los Angeles city family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zine. Congratulations again to all of our extraordinary city employees.
And if I could just note that the family members that are joining us, please come in the back for photos in the media room. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a quorum. If we can call the roll, please.
Alacon Cartner, School, Han, Weasel Labon, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Vice President Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Ms. Perry?
I just wanted to make a quick announcement about those present in the audience today and ask the students from the Jefferson High School leadership class to stand up. Stand up, so that we can welcome them to council chamber today and to give them their recognition. They have a school motto which is "Demo Pride," and they have worked hard to increase their school spirit. Jefferson High School has improved steadily over the last few years, and they have done Green Alley's programs, improving safety in the community, and have had an astonishing 59-point increase in their API score last year. That's pretty amazing, so we should give them a big hand for that. 59 points. Now, these young people plan activities, club fairs, dances, blood drives, games, music during lunch on Fridays, and special assemblies, and so I just wanted to express my appreciation for them coming down here and being civically engaged and learning more about how their city conducts its affairs. So thank you for coming. Relax for a while and enjoy the, I would say enjoy the show, but it's not a show. This is how government works, and we'll take a picture. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. First order of business, Mr. Clerk?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right. Ms. Hahn moves, and Mr. Alacon seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. Colleagues, if you don't mind, right before we go to the first presentation, we'll run through the agenda, so if you have any specials, Mr. Alacon or anyone else, just let me know. If we can take up the first... just let me know. If we can take up the first items real quick?
Items one through three are street lighting districts, notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on June 19th.
Okay. Without objection, we'll go ahead and continue public hearings and, sorry, continue the ordinances to the 19th of June and open the public hearings. Next items, please.
Items four through eight are items for which public hearings have been held. Reports have been submitted on items four, five, and six, and on item seven, the committee submitted that without recommendation this morning.
Okay, let's call that special.
And there is a request on item eight to continue that to Tuesday, June 2nd.
Okay. Item eight, if there's no objection, we'll continue that till the 2nd of June. That'll be next Tuesday. Other specials, colleagues, four, five, six, four, five, and six. If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on four, five, and six. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items nine through 22 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. An objection to consideration? If not, those will be before us. 14 for Mr. Alakon. Other specials, colleagues? Call 10 special.
Then hold 12 for an amending motion.
Okay. Ms. Perry, 12. And do we have cards on any of the others? Okay. Let's go ahead. If there's no other specials then, and please open the roll on the balance. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, those are approved. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, item 23 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and a motion is required on this.
If there's no objection to consideration, that is before us. Anybody wishing to call 23 special? We do have cards on 23, so we'll call that special for cards on the public. If we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alakon Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weasel, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Vice President, Zane, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum.
Okay. Item 24, I believe, will continue. We have no...
Yeah, item 24, nothing has been received, so there's no action required today.
And item 25?
And item 25 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 25 special? For the public, it is for new electric vehicles, mini-electric vehicles. All right, with that, let's go ahead then and open and close a public hearing. And, sorry, Mr. Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that will be approved as well. If we can adjourn the special meeting, go back to the regular meeting. Mr. Rosenthal?
I'll stick with the switch. Item 13, I'd like us to call special.
Okay, if we can reconsider 13, Mr. Rosenthal, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Call that special for Mr. Rosenthal. If we can send 16 forthwith, without objection. And with that, I'd like to recognize for our next presentation, council member from the 7th District, Councilmember Richard Alakon.
Members, it's my pleasure to announce the second annual dedication of Burt Corona Day in Los Angeles. It's interesting that with a president who is now in office, who was a community organizer, last year we decided to recognize the epitome of the concept of community organizing, and that is the life and legacy of Burt Corona. Burt dedicated his life to serving people, and yet he was not a household name. He touched so many lives, but we thought it important for people to understand who he was, not just for Burt, but for all of the community organizers who go unnamed and yet who are working in the streets to fight for social justice, to work at their local church, to work in the schools, to work in a variety of volunteerism, to fight crime in our neighborhood. All of these activities are contributing to our community. So it's my pleasure to recognize Burt Corona Day Friday, May 29th, in Los Angeles. Burt Corona was born to immigrant parents in the border town of El Paso in 1918 and is inspired by his father's participation in the Mexican Revolution. Corona dedicated his life to fighting economic and social injustice. His untiring activism based on coalition building and community mobilization spanned much of the 20th century. As a young man in the 1930s, Burt took part in the great organizing campaigns for the newly formed Congress of Industrial Organizations among various ethnic groups in the Los Angeles areas. These early union drives infused the Latino community with a new vitality, creating groups such as the Mexican-American Movement, the National Congress of Spanish-speaking People, and the Association of National Mexico Americana. Burt worked alongside Cesar Chavez and the UFW organizing farm workers and in the political sphere. He served as co-chair for both Lyndon Johnson's and Bobby Kennedy's presidential campaigns in California. He also worked immersing himself in the campaign to organize undocumented Latino immigrants. Burt Corona also founded Ermandad Mexicana Nacional, which is the nation's largest Latino immigrants organization with over 30,000 member families across the country. Founded in San Diego, California in 1951, it is a not-for-profit mutual aid organization that combines the strong family values of Latin American culture and the deeply rooted United States tradition of volunteerism. Burt Corona died on February 15th, 2001, in Los Angeles. I can tell you that one of my very first political actions was to stand up for the workers at the old Mahian Chevrolet in East Los Angeles, and Burt Corona was the lead picketer on that. And I'll never forget that that was my personal introduction to picketing, and it remains with me. On another personal note, not only did I have a relationship with Burt through numerous political activities, as many around this horseshoe have, in addition to that, my stepmother, Lupe, became naturalized by being processed through the Mexicana Nacional. And so I am very pleased that we stand to recognize this amazing man. Finally, to continue the tribute as a community, a charter school was formed in the name of Burt Corona, which is very fascinating. It's similar to the notion of Miguel Contreras, and I hope to be, there will be a long line of people who have dedicated their lives to building the community through community organization. But his charter school remains one of the outstanding charter schools in the northeast San Fernando Valley. So first of all, I would like to introduce his wife, his widow, Angelina Corona.
Thank you so much for counsel, Mr. Alakon, for dedicating this day to my husband, Burt Corona. I'm pretty sure a lot of these people who are here, a lot of the city councils were influenced by his ideas, his vision, his passion to build the political landscape, not only in Los Angeles, but in California nationwide. He was one of those few people who was able to leave everything behind, to be at the top of the struggle. He always fought until he died in January 2001. And I'm pretty sure a lot of the city councils would follow what he created, what he planted, and will stand for the rights of immigrants, the rights of the poor, the rights of poor women. Today, we will be delightful to give the Burt Corona Award to one of the younger city councils, Jose Weisar. And we will, looking forward to continue working, producing new citizens, and making them to go to the pools and be able to vote and participate in political initiatives as they saw us. Thank you very much.
Mr. Alakon, Mr. Weisar wanted to talk to you. Want to wait till another speaker? Or do you want to hear him from right now? Up to you. All right, Mr. Weisar, since your name was mentioned, please.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Alakon, for bringing in the family of Burt Corona each and every year. And I want to thank all of you for being here today and continuing to be part of this celebration of Burt Corona and reminding us of the legacy he's left behind, and certainly here with his daughter and students from Burt Corona Charter Middle School, and its principal, Ruben Dueñas, and Dixon Slingerland, who helps with the charter school. Thank you for being part of this. And certainly, we all know that Burt Corona is one of those people who probably came out of the womb fighting for the underground, fighting for that person who needed the voice. And I've heard that this is someone who didn't care about his legacy. He said he was, "I don't care about my legacy. I don't care about being recognized. I just want to do the work." But now we're at a place where we do care, and that's why I'm really happy that we're mentioning and making May 29th the Burt Corona Day. He has left a legacy. He has left an impact on thousands upon, thousands upon people. So thank you for being here today, and I certainly hope that not only Burt Corona Charter Middle School learns more about his life, but that other schools throughout LAUSD and other charter schools begin to recognize the impact that Burt Corona had, not only Latinos, immigrants, but all of us. So thank you so much. And now we are also joined by his daughter, Dr. Margot DeLe.
I'm deeply honored to be here in LA City Council. I live in Chicago. I work for Chicago Public Schools, and I, but I was born in Los Angeles, so it's like coming home in many different ways. Yes, Burt was an organizer, and he also was a strong proponent of education. He started his first organizing at a boy's school in New Mexico when he was about 15 years old, so hardly older than the children who are here. I'm very much inspired to be here among the children from the Burt Corona Charter School. If Burt were here, he would say to them, "You can do anything. You can be anything you want to become. You are the leaders. You are the future visionaries who will address the issues and the aspirations of future generations." And he'd also be delighted that the young people are here in city council chambers, because as many of you know, he strongly felt that, that government really was of, by, and for the people, including children, including immigrants, including the disenfranchised. And he would be delighted to see young people here, learning and seeing and being a part, and by their presence here, having a voice in their future. Thank you very much, and I'm deeply honored that you are paying this tribute today.
We also have Dixon Slingerland, the Executive Director of the Youth Policy Institute, which is the founding organization for the Burt Corona Charter School. And he would also like to introduce the next generation of community organizers in Los Angeles. Thanks. It's a, it's a great honor to be here again, recognizing Burt. I want to thank council member Alakon for, for putting this on again this year. Thank the council for recognizing Burt. One of the great honors of my career was getting to name a school after Burt Corona, so this is, this is really wonderful experience and to have the students here. So let me introduce Jennifer from Burt Corona Char School, who's on the student body council.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Jennifer.
Jennifer, we just, there you go, perfect. Now we can hear you. You don't have to stand on your tippy toes.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Vazia. I'm the student body secretary at Burt Corona Charter School. I would like to thank the city council family, Burt Corona. Today, in honor of where schools' names say, 350 students at our school are being CPR and first aid certified. We are prepared to serve our community and city like Burt Corona. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to recognize Ruben Dueñas, the principal of Burt Corona Charter School. I want to thank him for his leadership. And with that, I want to present this to the family of Burt Corona and to all these people present, to recognize a tremendous community leader. Let me tell you one thing, I think I mentioned this last year, but any of you who really worked with Burt know that it was never good enough. Whatever you were doing was never good enough, and it was that spirit that kept him going. He must have struggled in his own way with his own performance, because he challenged and challenged and challenged, just as I hope this school is challenging these young people to always strive to do more, to be better, to improve our community. So with that, I'd like to present this to Angelina and his daughter and son.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon, and thank you to the entire Corona family and to all of our great students that are here today. Thank you very much. Dixon, always good to see you, too. With that, we will recognize for our next presentation, council member from the 11th District, Bill Rosenthal.
This is Friday morning, and Friday morning is the time we honor everybody. We honor all kinds of folks who make a huge difference in our lives, and this is very, very healthy and positive. I'm here to talk about soccer. What's the word you use? Go! Okay. Cal State University Dominguez Hills Soccer Champions, the Toros. I was a distinguished visiting professor there, you know? That's one of my alma maters. I love it. For all you soccer fans out there, this is an exciting time of the year, as Barcelona defeated Manchester United 2 to 1 on Wednesday for the European Championship League Final. That's right. Round of applause for that. This is also an exciting day for Angelino soccer fans. I want to thank David Gamboa from California State University Dominguez Hills for bringing along the CSU Dominguez Hills Toros Championship Soccer Team, led by coaches Joe Flanagan, Jeff Tuttle, Drew Rea, and Devin Trulli. Where are the coaches? Okay, put your hands up, coaches, so we can see who they are. Let's give them a round of applause. In the NCAA postseason, the Toros soccer team beat 25th-ranked Notre Dame, DeMora 3 to 0 in the first round. The Toros followed with a 4 to 0 victory over the 18th-ranked Cal State LA to win the Western Regional Title. The Toros advanced to the NCAA semifinals in Tampa by beating third-ranking Midwest State 2 to 1. They went on to beat the 11th-ranked tournament host, Tampa University, 3 to 2 in overtime. The team completed their triumphant season on Sunday, December 7th, 2008, with a dominating 3 to 0 win over Dowling University of New York. That's right. Give them a round of applause for that, folks. The players and coaches are a source of pride for Los Angeles as they represent communities all throughout the greater Los Angeles metropolitan area. Their championship season was truly a team effort, with honors and accolades going to head coach Joe Flanagan, who was the name, the 2008 National Soccer Coaches of American Division II Coach of the Year. All right, Joe? We got a built-in audience here, folks, folks who really enjoy playing soccer and making a difference. The team included the 2008 National Soccer Coaches Association of American Division National Player of the Year, Kevin Gallagher, along with five Final Four All-Tournament Teams, and two NSCAA First Team All-American recipients. And the inspiration for this magical season was dedicated to the memory of teammate Jarrett JT Minami, who died at 25 years old of natural causes. The City of Los Angeles congratulates the California State University Dominguez Hills Toros for its second NCAA Men's Soccer National Championship, the third NCAA Championship in school history. And Sharon Cummins, one of the great mothers, who's a major activist in Mar Vista. Where are you, Sharon? Come on up here. Where's your son? Okay. All right, that's your son right there. Just so you can see everybody here, she's a leader in the community. Your son's going to be a leader in the community. Let's give her a round of applause, too. Okay, folks, come on up. Say a few words.
Well, obviously, I'd like to say thanks for having us today. It's a great honor to be here, to be amongst the, a lot of prestigious people here. Take the time out. We had a great little championship travel here to doing different things like this, and to be honored like this is an awesome feeling.
like this is an awesome feeling. We had some great, obviously, a great season. We were 21, 2-4. Winning 3-0 in the final was quite a statement. Our team made a great statement on championship Sunday, so I was very proud of them. We have the teammates here. We have a great returning cast that's going to come back next year, so we're looking forward to next year as well. And we'd like to present, we have a captain here. This is Kevin Gallagher, National Player of the Year, who's got the championship trophy.
Look at that trophy. Wow.
And then we also have another team captain here, Kyle Hall, who'd like to present something to the council here.
All right. Good morning, council. It's an honor to be here. I never thought that soccer would bring me here, but it's exciting. And on behalf of Dominguez Hills, I want to thank you and present you with this ball from the actual championship game in which we won 3-0.
Wow. Oh, golly. Good, 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 good. There we go. Thank you very much for that. And we have a shirt for you, California State University Dominguez Hills. Here you go, folks. Anybody else want to say something? All right, again, another round of applause. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations again. Our next presentation will be from council member from the 4th district, Tom LaBange.
Big hand to the champion, Dominguez Hills. Good job. Good job, Billy. All right. From one champion to another, I'd like to invite Scout Troop 20 up here right now for recognition this morning. The Boy Scouts of America, Troop 20, out of Mother Good Counsel, started almost 90 years ago. This troop has been very helpful in very many projects recently, including the restoration of Griffith Park. They've been involved in building trails, rebuilding Dante's View, and planting trees. The scouts are behind me are Eagle Scouts. And may I tell you, Madam President, Mr. President, members, my mentor was an Eagle Scout, Milt Davis, who, you know, we talk about Milt. Eagle Scouts are very, very special people. They've reached the highest rank in the Boy Scouts. The title Eagle Scout is held for life. That's giving the rise to the phrase, "Once an eagle, always an eagle." Please give these young people a hand. Assistant Scout Master Richard Starzak is here, and I'm going to ask Richard to come forward. Richard also was key in the development of working with our Department of Recreation and Parks on the implementation of the historic designation for Griffith Park. Richard, great to see you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Say a few words.
We just wanted to say, our troop, as Tom said, has been active for 90 years, and we stress really difficult outings that challenge the boys, yet they have a chance to have fun. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Richard, you're going to help me here. Richard?
I want to say, I myself was a scout, only reached the Order of Star. But I learned a lot of great skills, and we saw Southern California, California. And any scouts may be able to climb Mount Whitney? Anybody in this room may be able to climb Mount Whitney? I was fortunate with my troop 527 to climb Mount Whitney in 1965, I think it was, as a scout troop. So, we have work to do, council, because to climb Mount Whitney, it's the highest mountain in the continental United States. And so, it was a special treat. And that wouldn't happen unless I was in the Scouts. So, to do that, I'm going to call on these members here who are raking in the award of merit.
Derek's not here today.
And Derek Albania is not here. Give Derek a big hand.
Justin, he's not here today.
Justin Vendetta, give Justin a big hand.
John Paul?
John Paul Cortez, big hand for John.
Good job, John. Where you going to school?
Pasadena City College. Good job, John Paul. Gabriel Alexander Joaquin did a great work in Dante's View. Good job, Gabriel.
Thank you.
Good job. Nicholas Lee.
Good job. Where you going to school?
I don't know.
Where you going to go to high school?
Um, we're at.
Oh, good, good. All right. Good job.
Patrick Molina.
Patrick's not here today.
Give Patrick a big hand. Jonathan Montarosa.
Good job, John. Where you going to school?
Trey Tech, give him a big hand. An Eagle Scout. Joseph Ramirez.
Good job. Where you going to school?
Saint Mary's College, California.
Oh, where's that? Up north?
Yeah.
God, he goes to Saint Mary's College in Northern California. And I'll tell you a story. John Fraul, who's this chamber's named after, when he went to USC, they had a football schedule during the war. They used to play Saint Mary's pre-flight. So, God bless Saint Mary's, and God bless you, Joseph. Good job. Nicholas.
Nikolai.
Nikolai Starzak, good job. Nikolai, good job. Your son, father's son. Good job.
Where you going to school?
Evergreen State.
Evergreen State. What state's that in?
Washington.
Washington. Evergreen State, good job.
Peter Chun?
Peter Chun, he's at Cornell. All these young men went to our Mother Good Counsel Church and Catholic School on Vermont Avenue, where Ms. Hartun and I went with your brother years ago, your son. It's a special troop. Let's give Troop 20 and all these Eagle Scouts a big hand. Thank you. And let's give a second hand to their parents who were involved and helpful there. Thank you very much, Madam President, members, Troop 20, Boy Scouts of America.
Mr. Rizah is our next presenter from council district 14.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it's always difficult to follow Tom LaBange, but I'll try to keep my voice as loud as possible as well. But good morning, everyone. It's a real distinct honor and pleasure for me to be here today to recognize Luis Medina. He is a recognized producer, marketer, and promoter, and he's here today with his family and friends to be recognized for the tremendous work he does, not only in his industry, but in the community as well. In addition to being a highly sought-after producer, marketer, and promoter, Luis is also the founder of Uno Productions Incorporated, which he founded in 1986. Since its inception, Uno Productions has developed a solid reputation as a producer of live events, television production, as well as a marketing and promotion company for the Hispanic market. Uno's incredible track record includes the U.S. Latin market and international markets of Latin America, Europe, and Asia. Strong music industry relationships along with creative marketing, flawless execution, and intimate knowledge of the Hispanic market have put Uno Productions at the forefront in its field. Under Luis's leadership, Uno has become a highly respected and valuable partner for those seeking to expand into the exploding, multi-billion-dollar Latin consumer market. A couple of Luis's recent successes include El Premio de la Gente, Latin Music Fan Awards, which incorporated a 12-week voting promotional campaign; Premios a Nuestra Musica Cristiana, which was the first-ever Spanish-language Christian music award show. What impresses me most about Luis is not only his masterful way of addressing an industry and incorporating the growing Latino populations throughout the world, but he has somehow found time to fill his civic responsibility by giving back to the community. It was the same sense of responsibility that has led him to partner with labor organizations and others to raise awareness to all communities in the importance of voting, and he has incorporated this message in several of the events he has promoted. And he has made a difference by producing several of these events, and voter participation has actually increased. And though Luis aspires to empower and prove the quality of life for all people, he certainly has a soft spot for his home country of Venezuela, which he contributes to various charitable causes there in his home country. So, now, without further delay, let me present to Luis a resolution from the city of Los Angeles thanking you for being a leader in your industry and also giving back to our community here in Los Angeles, Venezuela, and throughout the world. Congratulations, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good morning to all the dear members of the city council. Thank you, Mr. Rizah. Here's my official translator, my son, Valentin. First of all, thank you for taking the time of your demanding and busy agendas to make this a special recognition. I am very grateful. Everything I have worked in my life has been done with passion and faith. I arrived here in 1976 from Venezuela. However, Los Angeles was not my final destination. I was on my way to London, but the minute I stepped foot in this beautiful city of angels, I knew my destiny was here. I accept it as God mandate. During my time spent here in Los Angeles, I was able to develop my professional career, and I was here in this diverse and unique city. I met my wife, Laura, and a few years later, we are five, including our three handsome boys, Mauricio, 15, Sebastian, 12, and Valentin, eight years old. At several occasions, I was offered career opportunities in other states and countries, but I always felt a connection to Los Angeles, where I was obviously destined to stay. My life has been dedicated to working in the entertainment business, including all its branches, music, television, film, radio, and many other areas. Currently, I am working on a project that in some way might help to unify Hispanic and Arabic cultures. A music album that will be released in over 50 countries titled Mario Reyes, The Gypsy Men, Sing from the Middle East. It's amazing to me how a simple music element can help to build bridges and tie bonds with such a distant territory like the Middle East. This product has been produced in our beautiful city of Los Angeles. Fortunately, I have the opportunity to participate and produce several relief telethon with international agencies such as UNICEF, Red Cross, UDLA, and some others. I always believe that my mission in life and responsibility as producers, especially being involved in the entertainment business, is not only to entertain and bring joy and laughter to household, but to lend a helping hand to those in need when such times arrive. This is something I am very proud to have been able to accomplish and will continue to do. Currently, I am involved in a spiritual mission with the Christian Television Network, Alma Vision. I feel in many ways it is a second calling. I am working as a minister of God. I would like to express my gratitude to all my friends who have accompanied me in this unpredictable and incredible journey of my life, to my beloved family, who mean the war to me. I am forever grateful for always being by my side and believing in me against all odds. I love them very much. Gracias to my good friend, Councilman Jose Rizah, and all of the city council for their generosity to bestow upon me this special recognition. You made my day. I also want to extend thanks to all my friends and colleagues who have helped me through all the last 22 years in my endeavors in our company, Uno Productions. We will stand proudly. We are forever looking ahead as another part of the fabric of this great city who contributes toward its greatness. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. God bless the city of Los Angeles and the United States of America.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes? Mr. Medina? Mr. Medina, Mr. Reyes would like to add his good wishes to.
I just want to take a moment, Señor Medina, to thank you for your kindness, for your great heart. I think it's hard for me to understand the presence and the significance of the Spanish-speaking communities of this Western Hemisphere. When you look at the Spanish language, it is the language south of the United States. The Americas does speak in Spanish. And for you to embrace that and make it into a successful business in a very, very tough industry here in an English-speaking world really says a lot about your capacity, your tenacity, but also the great support from your wife and your children. Because I know as sons, they probably would like to see you more often. I know that happens to many of us who are public servants, and it is a great price to pay, a great sacrifice. So, I thank you for everything you do. I thank your family, your wife Laura, and your sons for their patience, but more importantly, the sense of meaning and value placed in this great language, Spanish, that complements this great country, because it is an international language, and it's going to make this country that much greater because of your efforts. So, thank you so much.
Muchas gracias, señor Reyes.
Thank you very much. That will end our special presentations for today. We'll return to the items that were called special.
That would be great.
And just before that, we'll take our general public comment. And our first speaker is here in council chambers, and that is Michael Carrion. After that, we'll go to Van Eyse, and Bruce Darian will be our second speaker. Mr. Carrion here? Michael Carrion, once. Okay. We'll go then to Van Eyse and Bruce Darian.
Morning, city council members.
Good morning.
Good morning, President Garcetti. I spoke here Wednesday about Malibu Pier and the corruption relating to that and the government contracting fraud. For many years, the city of Los Angeles, although not part of the lawsuits, has discounted any connection to this. There's been a wide-scale conspiracy of silence over this, public works fraud and how the mechanics of corruption work with contractors. Mr. Alacon's district, you have Superior Gunite, which is on Van Eyse Boulevard and Foothill. They've submitted false claims to the government. They're causing damage to Los Angeles with their corrupt contracting practices. You have Superior Gunite's receiver that they had administered, appointed by the Santa Monica Court, David J. Pasternak. He's a Los Angeles attorney. He sits on the Judicial Council of California. Under color of law, he has submitted false claims to the state of California, and this has cost the taxpayers millions of dollars. It's gone on a decade. I say to the people of Los Angeles, "I've done my best. I've gone to bat for you to uncover this fraud." The people of Los Angeles, you need to stand up and ask questions. Have this audited. Many people that sit on this council know about it and either participated or acquiesced in it. Council member Alacon.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Again, this Malibu Pier matter is not within the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles.
Hold my time while he's speaking, please.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. If we could please focus on things that we have direct control. And I understand gentle control sometimes, but direct control, please.
Okay. Then I'd like some more time on this. Part of my Clean Water Act suit as a citizen of the United States, the Los Angeles River has been encumbered with sewage from the Tapia Reclamation Facility. This causes jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. The water is diverted from Calabasas Creek to the LA River, and it's under constant dumping and discharge, as well as from the Tillman Reclamation Plant. So, you have jurisdiction here through the Los Angeles River. You have many people that were either public servants for the city of Los Angeles, or that are current council members that sat on the state senate or were assembly members, including Alacon, Cardenas, and Mayor Viragosa. So, we'll continue it.
Thank you, Mr. Darian. Our next speaker is in San Pedro, Zuma Dog, and after that is Matt Dowd, also in San Pedro. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. Zuma Dog, San Pedro. I love San Pedro, of course, because it's like a ghost town. It's very chill. Nobody's here. Anyway, thank you so much to, yes, and I'd like my supporters to come behind me. It's perfectly okay. Thank you to Doug McIntyre, 790K ABC. And thank you for Denizine for going on. They spoke about the pension board. And basically, I've been talking about it all along, that the problem, we have a $7 billion pension loss. The city is on the hook. They are going to have to pay up to 56 cents. They're going to be paying more money for the pensions than for the entire city services. Now, here's the problem. We have Antonio Viragosa, who, by the way, must be recalled. If you heard the meeting on Wednesday, you heard the experts from the pension commissions up there, and the experts said it is not right to have one person have four or five appoint- appointments on the pension commission. It's too much power. And here's what's happening, people. There's a few billionaires in town. We got Ron Burkle, we got Dan Weinstein of Weatherly, and what happens is they back the politicians, they back the council members, they back the mayor. Then it's time, okay, the mayor gets elected, what's the first thing he does? He puts William H. Jackson, Weatherly Capital's longtime attorney, Weatherly Capital, involved in SEC investigations, including a guilty charge with one of the people associated with Weatherly. So the mayor takes the Weatherly Capital attorney and appoints him chairman of the CRA. Then what happens? The Weatherly Capital pension people, they start funneling money into the CRA projects, and we all know how those have gone. Also, we have found out that the investments are way too risky, not bond and investment grade, but venture capital grade. So the problem is $7 billion, a few greedy politicians, and a few people like Ron Burkle, Darius Anderson, Dan Weinstein. Your moms, your family, your kids are forever going to suffer a reduced quality of life because of the greed of these politicians. Recall Viragosa, reappoint all the commissioners.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Mr. Matthew Dowd. Mr. Dowd, I believe, is out in Van Nuys also. I'm sorry, Mr. Dowd, San Pedro.
Yes, San Pedro, it's the opposite direction. But look, you owe me public comment from yesterday. I spoke for one minute on three items only, and I had two minutes of public comment, but everybody else gets five minutes on the agenda. How can I cover all the shadiness in the agenda with just three minutes? That's ridiculous. So I want two more minutes of public comment today. I've got cards in for everything. I'm Matt Dowd, Channel 35. I'm here because the city of Los Angeles violated me and a number of performers and vendors at Venice Beach. Bill Rosendahl, who's in that room down there right now, he got up on TV and said, yeah, we'll let the federal judge decide it. And the federal judge decided it, and he made a judgment against the city of Los Angeles. And we had a federal jury assembled for the damages. They awarded us $268,000. Bill Rosendahl said he would accept the federal judge's ruling, but hey, guess what? If you notice that we've ramped up the activism, you know, we're all over the city. Every time you turn on TV, it's Matt Dowd and Zuma Dog. It's because the city filed an appeal now. And you actually did well. I thought you did super, super, super well to get us down to 268,000. But then you're appealing it? So I'm going to talk about the $7 billion now, every time I come down here, that you lost. Because, yeah, it's the children of this city, the children of this city who won't be getting any trash picked up, there'll be no police, the crime will be rampant, and they'll be saying, yeah, it's this city council, this mayor, Viragosa, made the commission appointments, you're getting investigated by the SEC, Wendy Grill's in there as well.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Felix Barone. Felix Barone?
My name is Felix Barone. I am going to be reading an email that I sent to Bill Rosendahl for a possible Japanese-American internment marker monument in Venice. Dear Councilman Rosendahl, my name is Felix Barone, and I am in Ms. Hayashibara's U.S. History class at Venice High School. I am sending you this email on behalf of a possible monument at the northeast corner of Venice and Lincoln Boulevards to remember the Japanese-American internment. I think that putting a marker monument in Venice would be a great idea because the Japanese-American internment was such an important part of our nation's history. On April 25, 1942, all persons of Japanese ancestry in the Venice area were forced to report to Venice and Lincoln to be put on buses and taken to camps. In these concentration camps, Japanese-Americans were mistreated by guards, given very little food, and given no rights due to Executive Order 9066, signed by Franklin D. Roosevelt. It wasn't until 1976 that EO 9066 was appealed. In 1988, President Reagan signed legislation that apologized for the internment and appropriated over $1 billion in reparations to surviving attorneys. After this, however, the history of the Japanese-American internment slowly began to fade, which is why we need the monument in Venice. Only with this monument can the legacy of the Japanese-American internment be remembered. So please support putting up a monument in Venice so that we won't make the same mistakes again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a few words. Don't go away.
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank Venice High School students and their chaperones that are here for being here this morning. Secondly, I want to thank you for uncovering a piece of history. In fact, when I heard that you all were studying that, I did my own research. In fact, that was one of the corners where Japanese-Americans were rounded up and put into those internment camps. It was an outrageous act by the American government at that point, and we are now exploring putting a motion together to work with our city to see if we can take one of those corners and put a plaque up. And when we get the permission and the approval, I will run a motion through the council, and if the council supports me on this action, I would like Venice High School with me to help write what we would put on that plaque in memory of it, and I'd like you to go back and work on that. And it would be an honor to be able to honor those folks that were mistreated by the government during the Second World War. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, help you go in the back. Now, our next public comment will come from, I believe it's Walter Bechtel.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to come back and, because something still hasn't been done about our hotel over there. SRO is supposed to be maintaining the Ford Hotel in interim until a loan is secured, which may or may not ever happen because of the contention of ownership problem we have there. They're supposed to maintain the hotel according to the rules of the city and the state and federal rules. Essentially, now they're slumboarding the hotel. We don't have anything but one shower head for all the people that live there that works. Several showers do work. Most of the ones, except for the one I'm talking about, have shower heads on them that are not regulation, they hardly put any water out. If you try to turn the water on, nothing comes out. And the way that the maintenance people are maintaining, they've got buckets with, I hate to say it, fecal waste, that sit in all the bathrooms for a week or more at a time. And I don't think that, just because SRO is a special company that is favored by the city, that that gives them some kind of right to do whatever they feel like until they get what they want. They still have to comply with the laws of the state, regardless of the fact that there's an ownership contention and whatever is going on, that you still don't want to make a settlement with me about. So I would appreciate if somebody explained that to them over there at SRO for the Ford Hotel located at 1002 East 7th Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. There'll be a deputy speaking to you about your complaints, and she's coming over to you right now. Next speaker is Sasan Aharanian.
Good morning, council members. Thank you so much for letting me talk today. My name is Sasan, and I want to talk about the layoff of city workers and a couple alternatives to that. Now, first off, I'd just like to talk about the city workers' key role. They provide the backbone for Los Angeles, and I mean, whether it be librarians to engineers at Hyperion, I mean, they keep the city moving. So I do understand in this proposal, we want to lay off 1,200, 1,200 city employees, but I don't seem to understand the logic in that, because why would we eliminate 1,200 of our younger employees? I mean, when, and as far as the furloughs go, the 10% cut, the 10% cut in their salaries is devastating. As SCIU's Julie Betcher addressed earlier, furloughs are not a legitimate way to balance this budget and represent instead an illegal wage cut that would devastate families. So as a result, furloughs are not the way to go. City workers must continue, or wait, wait, no, okay. All right. Furloughs are a 10% service cut to residents and a 10% pay cut to L.A. families that will devastate whole communities. But our counterproposal is early retirement, the early retirement plan. Now, with early retirement, it can pump hundreds of millions of dollars into the economy and save the city billions while stimulating the economy and minimizing service cuts to residents. So as a result, if we do this, not only are we saving our younger groups and helping them help the city, we're also rewarding our older members and rewarding them as valuable city workers. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Hurd. I believe Mr. Hurd may be in San Pedro.
Good morning, council. I just want to come out in support of the monument in Venice Beach. I think that is an amazing tribute to a moment in our history, a valuable moment this country went through in World War II. When we rounded up the Japanese and moved them into internment camps, that was a horrible, horrible, horrible crime. This country has a history of doing things like that. When we took care of the Indians and put them on reservations, that was a horrible, horrible, horrible crime. And it's important that these monuments stand as a tribute to a part of our history that people have to know about, understand, and remember. We can learn from these events, we can grow from these events, and we have grown from these events. And I am so proud of Councilmember Bill Rosendahl for his support of this action, and God bless the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurd. All right, we have no further cards for public comments, so that will close our public comment period. Mr. Clerk, our next item?
Madam President, Item 7 was being held on the table.
Now, we can proceed with that item. It's fine. We've had a public hearing on that item.
However, the Ad-Hoc Recovery Committee submitted the report without recommendation.
I think that it was the intention of the chair to continue the discussion that we started in ad hoc here in council, because we ran out of time. We do have one card on the item, so why don't I see if that individual is still here? Deacon Alexander? That's Deacon Hosea M. Alexander, Sr. Thank you.
President. Madam Chairperson, I appear before you today as a person who's been here before and for a very special reason. Yesterday, as I watched C-SPAN, I noticed that Mr. Gene Spurling, advisor to the Treasury Secretary Timothy Geithner, pointed out that President Obama's chief objective would be community development. And that being the case, I'm here before you this morning to speak and propose as a part of Item 7, Housing Community and Economic Development Committee, that a parallel project, the City of Los Angeles One L.A. project, be funded for City Councilman Bernard Parks' district. And I say that because I'm fully aware that the impact would be to sustain real estate values in that district, to sustain families, as well as to sustain jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you, and I'd first like to thank the City Council and the taxpayers of Los Angeles for our new private studios for Matt Dowd and myself. The lighting's good, the curtains, I really appreciate the effort, and it's much nicer to come here. We don't have to be bothered with all you council members. Regarding this Economic Recovery Act, oh, boy, is Los Angeles City Council excited. They got Obama, federal money coming to town, baby. Let's get the front-end loaded management contracts lined up. Tell everyone to get in line. City Council's going to have money to hand out to all their friends and crony developers, and the money's going to disappear like it always does. And I'd like to make sure that this federal money does not go into CRA projects. What the city has a bad habit of doing is speculating on risky projects that do nothing for the regular people. They end up putting this stuff in a Grand Avenue project, Eli Brode's pet project, with these $90 million cement parks and subsidies, and the people don't get to live there. And I'm just here to say, I'm very, very, very concerned that in these economic times, there's no time for your shenanigans. I want accountability, I want somebody, an inspector general in charge of this money, to make sure it's going to the people and not into your cronies, and not into Ron Burkle's shill, of a shill development projects, and that William H. Jackson isn't voting it all into his Weatherly Capital investments, and that Bill Clinton isn't getting involved in, you know, Henry Cisneros. I want to make sure none of this money goes to Henry Cisneros. You might have heard about Henry Cisneros. He had a big fundraiser for Mayor Antonio Viragosa. Then, before you know it, Antonio is putting millions of dollars, oh, we need to give money to Henry Cisneros.
Madam President, he's off-topic here.
Mr. Zuma Dog, can you please come back to the topic that we are currently discussing and reviewing? We'd appreciate that, Mr. Zuma Dog.
Okay.
Thank you.
My time's ticking out, so I'd like to say, I want to make sure none of this federal--
I'll give you more time, Mr. Zuma Dog, because we enjoy your comments.
Dennis, I want to make sure that none of this federal money makes it into Antonio Viragosa's money laundering shill, real estate, Henry Cisneros, Hillary Clinton, Bill Clinton investments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Appreciate your comments and your insight. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
Thank you, but before we take up any of my comment, I need a clarification from Dion O'Connell, the city attorney, because I had comment time lost yesterday, which needs to be repaid today, and so I need to know which items, if you're going to take my time away from me, I've got to know which items I want to talk on, so clarify that, please.
What was that question? Can we just stop the clock so we can find the answer to the question?
No, no, actually, his question is impertinent to this item, Mr. President.
He did ask a question, though. I'd like to give an answer to the question. He asked a question about time?
There are no rollover minutes, Mr. President.
A rollover, okay, I couldn't understand, because I was talking about rollover. This is not the sell-your-phone industry where you get rollover minutes. Mr. Dowd, there's no rollover minutes. When the time's gone, it's gone, so let's put two minutes back on the clock so we enjoy your comments. Hold on, we're going back to two minutes, and then we will begin, Mr. Dowd, on this lovely Friday afternoon. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to waive this item then, because obviously, if you're going to take away my minutes, then--
Don't let him out of it, don't let him out of it, don't let him out of it, don't let him out of it. Federal money, Henry Cisneros.
Yep. Look. Dion, no, look. I'm waving.
Ah, Jesus.
For the record--
What happened?
He should be charged a minute.
What did he do? All right, we done? Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Thank you for your comments, how brief they were. Next item, please.
You're still on the item, Mr. President.
We still are. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Miss Perry and Miss Han. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Nice to see you there.
President for a day.
You're like a cop up here.
For a few minutes.
I want to thank you for recognizing me, and I want to thank colleagues who discussed this. We had seven colleagues who discussed this in committee, and we've had five others in the other committees, so I think a majority of the council has probably discussed this and looked at this. A couple things, this is $19 million that has been given to the city of Los Angeles through our ERA, which is American Reinvestment and Recovery Act of $2,009, so our stimulus dollars, through the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is something that we traditionally have. We actually passed our consolidated plan earlier in this very same meeting for the normal allocation that we have, and this was an additional $19 million or so that was put forward today. We looked at it in the Housing Committee, and then we looked, which passed it forward as recommended initially, and then in our Ad-Hoc Committee today, we passed it forward without any recommendation, because we couldn't finish our discussions here. Ms. Han brought up an issue, I'm sure she's going to speak to, Mr. Rosendahl did as well. This is essentially a combination of different economic stimulus money, services, housing money, and other things that will help us with jobs and relieving some of the impact that the economic downturn has had on our constituents, from nutrition programs and other things, to being able to look at job training and some stimulus projects. Within that, there are a number of projects that-- Within that, there are a number of projects that bring companies to Los Angeles, other ones that look at affordable housing. One technical point, though, is that only, we have 25 percent of what's proposed before us for services as opposed to capital projects. Of those services right now, we can only get 15 percent of those dollars can be spent on services, so we're gonna be talking to the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development Department to see if we can get a waiver to go back to what we had a few years ago, allowing us after the civil unrest of 1992, for a period of time, we were able to use 25 percent of our block grants for services, and we certainly feel that right now. I do have some hesitation of putting forward an application for 25 percent now and then saying, well, if we don't get it, going back to 15 percent instead of vice versa, because it would seem the rules right now are what the rules are. So that's just an issue to kind of flag, and perhaps we could have our Community Development Department and the Mayor's Office come forward to continue the discussion that we had that was in committee, but I know that there are members here, and I know the Community Development Agency is here as well. Have we had any communication with HUD that would reassure me on that first point, that yes, you know, I know the Secretary, the mayor knows the Secretary, we're gonna be asking for that, but it seems a little bit, you know, putting the cart before the horse to say, let's submit something for rules as they don't exist now, and then if we're told not to, then we can always go back to the rules the way they are rather than vice versa. And it's a little game, perhaps, of chicken. I would hate to see us punished because they said, well, these are clearly the rules. You can only do 15 percent in services, and you submitted something that is outside those rules. So if we had any communication with the HUD office here, whether or not they would be upset by that or penalized for submitting under different rules than currently exist?
No, the actual regulations suggest that there is a 15 percent cap, but they also suggest that the Secretary has discretion to waive any of the rules and regulations that generally apply to regular CDBG, which would include the public services and the administrative and planning caps.
Okay. Knowing that the Secretary may is different than saying, you know, please, then, if you're interested in that, submit as is, and so it is a hesitation that I have, colleagues, and I know it changes all the numbers, but especially on that services piece, but I would like, I think we are gonna wind up continuing this over the weekend. It would be great to be in touch today to make sure, so that we've had an explicit conversation with our local office here, that they understand that, that they know that I, the mayor, are going to be reaching out to the Secretary of HUD, but that they don't feel that somehow they weren't brought in, because we can understand that even in our own bureaucracies, going over people's heads, sometimes people then will say, well, you're gonna be punished for not playing by the rules the way they are. So between now and then, if we are to submit a 25 percent, I want to have that reassurance. Secondly, there are some outstanding issues in terms of the allocation. I'll let members speak to that themselves, but generally, I want to thank the department and the Mayor's Office for working on the jobs piece, and I would recommend that everybody look at that breakdown of how many construction jobs, temporary-permanent jobs are going to be created by each project. Now, what we pass as a body doesn't say that everything has to be just for jobs. Some things are to relieve the suffering that people have right now. Some things are to make sure that there's housing available, et cetera. It's a combination, but included in this are that the people of Los Angeles know, and the employees of our city know too, because a lot of people have said, well, great, you're getting $19 million, and then we're gonna be laying people off or furloughing people. Part of this money does include money that would go towards retaining city positions. Isn't that correct? For instance, $2 million for sidewalk repair that otherwise would not be there?
Correct.
Do we have an idea of how many are city jobs from the overall 2,500 jobs approximately that we estimate would be created by this?
I believe there would be 20 jobs created in the sidewalk and curb repair program. In addition, there are two positions within the Bureau of Contract and Administration for the First Source Hiring Program, so a total of 22.
Okay. And then some of the administrative overhead retains jobs at CDD as well?
Correct.
Okay. So there's a piece of that. For those who are city employees who are saying, why can't we just put it all into the city and balance our budget? We can't because of the specific programs that the federal government has written says very specifically what we can and can't put in many of our stimulus dollars, so want to point that out to folks as well. So with that, colleagues, I think it might be, one last point. The reason why I said we might want to continue this until Tuesday is we will know today what the outcome is from the state piece on some of the housing projects. A number of us have housing projects, but if the state turns down our applications there, it's a disappointment to some of us, but it certainly frees up some money between now and when we have to submit this. So that, I think, will address some of the concerns that were brought up in committee, and I'm sure working with our other Chair, Mr. Westen, who's done a great job of steering this forward, we'll be able to have a finalized list. I also, if we don't get the reassurance from the local HUD office that it's okay to do this kind of cart before the horse, we should also be looking at our backup plan for the 15 percent to make sure we don't miss that deadline, too. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President here. Thank you, Mr. President there. Well, I think the recommendation will be to continue this till Tuesday because I think we're gonna hear some more information, and in the committee this morning, colleagues, I brought up the issue of one of the projects that is slated to receive some dollars from the stimulus project. It's the Lancet project in South Los Angeles, which has been around for some 30 years. We were asking that this project be allocated about $1.75 million, but when it came to committee this morning, the 7.5 had been reduced, so it was just a million. And again, I know we're all gonna be about who gets what money, and to bump it up to 1.75 means we might have to massage some of the other projects, but colleagues, the Lancet project is clearly the poster child for the economic stimulus recovery money. I mean, this is about creating 360 jobs, local jobs, in South Los Angeles. This project borders Gian Perry's district, Bernard Parks's district, and it's the north part of my district. This, I think, is what the stimulus money is all about, and so I would like to continue it as well until Tuesday to really look at, you know, what priorities we're deciding. And for me, there is no greater priority than creating jobs. This is a project that would be done, would be completed, if this 1.75 million was allocated to it, so. And I know we've heard this for 30 years, but this time, everyone is saying this is what it's gonna take. So hopefully by Tuesday, we'll have looked, and you may have looked at where we could maybe find some more money for that project, because, again, this is exactly what I think administration is looking for in terms of shovel-ready projects that create jobs, stimulate the economy, particularly in an area that is so hard-hit by this economic downturn. Frankly, this is an area that's hard-hit when the economy is good, so we could do so much with the Lancet project on this, so I'm glad we're continuing this. Hopefully, between now and Tuesday, we'll figure this out a little bit, but I just wanted to say that, colleagues, that I'd love to have your support on bumping that up so that project can actually be completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Ms. Perry.
Great, and maybe I can continue with Mr. Hollis as we had this discussion this morning in committee. We ran out of time, and it was about Ansaldo Breda, the railcar manufacturing facility, and the action that the MTA Board took yesterday, and I would ask him to go over that because my concern is, as I expressed in committee, that the Board of the CRA issued an exclusive negotiating agreement last week with Ansaldo Breda, even though I believe there's an RFP pending for 14 out of 20 of the acres, and I believe, and again, correct me, Mr. Hollis, if I'm wrong, that that is contingent upon the decision of the MTA as to whether or not to move forward on this project, and I think, and I don't want to paraphrase incorrectly, that your words were that the money that we are seeking or you are seeking is designed or the purpose would be to prepare the site in terms of access and egress. Am I correct about that, regardless of who goes on there?
Mr. President, members of council, this project is unrelated to the Ansaldo Breda development. The purpose of these funds is to provide access to the 20-acre site regardless of who the ultimate tenant is. It is the CRA's plans to acquire additional properties along Santa Fe to make the property much more efficient and allow additional job-creating uses on the site, so it is not contingent upon the Ansaldo Breda going forward.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and you've expressed that to me a couple of times, so I appreciate it. My concern is this, I wanted to lead you through the factual summary of it so we could put that on the record. My concern about continuing to seek funds while we are in a tentative situation, the outcome may be that Ansaldo turns out to be on there, it may be RFP goes out, is that it's not shovel-ready, and it's not, basically, it's not ready. And I was under the impression, I think I understand, of the recovery program and the requirements that it puts upon us as local elected officials, that projects be shovel-ready or pretty darn close to being shovel-ready. We're in sort of a neither here nor there point on this site, other than to acquire land for the sake of acquiring land, and this is why I'm raising the issue.
Again, the purpose is not to acquire--
On my time.
--to acquire the land, to acquire the land. The purpose is to improve the access to the site, and we are, the requirements for these funds is to spend them immediately for a known use. We know the use. It is an industrial park, and we are prepared to immediately suspend those funds on acquisition.
Okay, but the application itself actually names the company, Ansaldo Breda, which is why I continue to ask these questions. I'm only basing my questions upon what I read in the application, so it is specific, at least the application itself is specific in the sense that it references Ansaldo Breda.
It is not. Again, it is not contingent on Ansaldo Breda.
Okay, well, like I said, you know, and I don't think we're gonna get anywhere in this conversation, because clearly you're not going to, you know, deal with me directly on this, and that's, I accept that. But again, I'm going based on what I read in the application, and that's why I'm asking you where we are in terms of, the approvals have not been given yet. It seems like the ENA may be in some potential crosshatches with the ultimate issuance of an RFP. The project is specific to, the application is specific to Ansaldo Breda, because that's what it says. And at this point, I just want to put it on the record, okay? So we'll have, we'll continue the discussion as the situation evolves. I think there may be some interest in continuing this so that we can get further information, and if that's the case, since I can't seem to get closure on this issue, I would go, I'd be happy to vote for a continuance on that if there is other interest in doing that. I think there's at least some interest in doing that.
Ms. Perry, you complete?
I'm done.
Huh? You're done? Okay, thank you. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm the councilmember that represents this area of the project that Ms. Perry brought up. You know, my role in this has been as a legislator. I let the CRA kind of look at the RFPs and determine what should be on there, so I haven't looked at or nor have I been involved with the negotiations with Ansaldo Breda, but I do know that using this site creates a tremendous opportunity for the City of Los Angeles to create clean technology in an area that desperately needs it, and it would really serve an environmental justice exclamation point, given the history that has happened on this site and the promises that were made to the local Bo Heights community. What I see here is some very good questions by Ms. Perry. Are we at the point where this project will be ready, given the criteria that has been set out by the CDBG and the recovery monies? But I would ask, then, if we're gonna give this project additional scrutiny, we should do that for all the projects, because I do think this one is being singled out, and we should look at to see if our projects kind of reach that criteria that we're setting out. In my view, whether Ansaldo Breda moves forward or not, we still need to do the work that this million dollars are being asked for us to do. We still need to provide additional access to this property. It is the largest assembled site in any industrial part of Los Angeles, and we must not miss this opportunity and do something with it. We do need this money irrespective of whether Ansaldo Breda moves forward or not, and quite frankly, in my view, you know, I don't care if Ansaldo Breda moves forward or not. We need something on this site that provides a clean technology, green jobs, and if you look at all the projects on the table today, this is the one that perhaps will provide the most jobs, over 661 jobs. So again, to reiterate, I would love, I mean, I think we're gonna continue this whole item, but I would ask that if we are gonna scrutinize this project as to whether it meets the criteria or not, let's scrutinize all the projects. And secondly, we have to look at this irrespective of what happens with Ansaldo Breda. The community and all of us need this work done with this million dollars to move forward with whatever clean technology manufacturing site moves into this property. So I would be open to continue this so that we could kind of look at this on a broader perspective and make sure that this project is ready, because I understand there's some real penalty to the city. If any of these projects are not shovel-ready or do not meet those federal guidelines, we may not be eligible for future funding if, in fact, we put forward a project that wasn't eligible in the first place. So we have to be very careful that we do scrutinize this project and all projects that they're meeting that criteria. If it's not eligible, let's take it off the table, but I want to make sure that we look at everything in all projects to make sure they're meeting the criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Alakon.
Members, this is the worst CDBG allocation I've ever seen, proposed. I cannot believe that areas with the highest rates of poverty have been essentially excluded from this allocation when this is a poverty-driven program. How can we justify not funding CD8 whatsoever? Is there not one shovel-ready project in CD8? That district has the highest rate of foreclosure in the entire region of the City of Los Angeles. My district is number two with the highest rate of foreclosure. We have an empowerment zone, an enterprise zone. What for if we're not gonna supplement those efforts with CDBG money? It is ridiculous that out of $19 million, only $600,000 has been specifically dedicated to the Seventh Council District, and of that, $100,000 of that is listed as a CD7, $200,000 is listed as a CD7/CD15 project, when in fact, it's going to serve the entire City of Los Angeles. This is unconscionable. I absolutely support a continuance because it's egregious. Where's the statistical analysis on this? We have a mayor who has driven the grid program on the basis of statistical analysis. Where's the poverty? Where's the gang violence? Where's, and then we allocated resources with the redeployment of CDD resources, the reform at CDD. It's driven by statistical analysis. Where's the statistical analysis in this allocation? I guarantee you, there is none because there is no sense of equity in this allocation. If we support this, we are turning a blind eye to the poor people of Los Angeles in terms of how we treat them with equity, because we are not going to treat them with equity if this is the allocation that we provide. So I hope in the next several days that we make considerable changes in this allocation or we find some other way to provide the equity that is not represented in this recommendation from Mayor Villarosa.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question and several comments, is that could CDD explain to me on the issue of the matting grants? The notes that we have reflects that the matting is gonna be well over $2 million on $19 million, and I just want to make sure I'm accurate on that.
Wanda Gaston with the Mayor's Office, rather than CDD. Councilman, I believe you're talking about the general fund impact?
Yes, yeah.
Correct. It's our understanding, based upon the assessment of the CAO, for the 20 positions that are allocated for the Bureau of Street Services, the total related cost that would generally be contributed back to the city for the admin overhead is about $1.4 million. We're not gonna, we're asking that we waive those actual contributions back to the general fund. In addition, there may be some related to the Bureau of Contract Administration as well, but if CAO staff is in the room, they may be better able to explain the actual dollar amount, but there is a general fund impact. Oh, and a great.
And while you're coming, the thing that I was concerned about, when you look at the dollars, if I'm not mistaken, when we just dealt with the Con Plan 35, it was something like $2.5 million general fund impact on about 80-some million? It's something in that neighborhood?
Okay, for the CDBGR, the $2 million for Bureau of Street Services will have a general fund contribution of about $1.9 million, and that's only for the related cost that is for street services. is for street services. Now--
Now, where is that coming for, the $1.9? Have we figured out where that's coming from?
That would be a general fund contribution.
Okay, is that because you're hiring people to put the sidewalks in?
Yes, we are retaining whatever was deleted in the budget. The 20 positions, approximately 20 positions that are being funded with the CDBGR, those positions have been deleted in the sidewalk budget, they were general funded positions.
But now, between the $2 million and then the city's contribution, how much of that actually goes into creating sidewalks? And, because we've always go back to this administrative overhead, that sometimes is greater than the actual work that gets done.
The way it was proposed by the Street Services, Bureau of Street Services, it would be 15 sidewalk effect, it would be a combination of different repairs. It would be sidewalk construction, gutter repair, as well as like, they will work with the different council districts to figure out, in terms of like, what they wanted, it could be an access ramp, so it's a menu of services that they will provide. It would be about $133,000 for each district, or one mile.
One mile of sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, the issue is, is that, and I would support also that this comes back next week, but I'd like to just get, should we get some information, to get all the clarity as to just what the city's impact, and if we're saying the city is going to come up with $1. something million, is, are we talking a reserve fund, or has that been identified, or how are we going to address that?
It hasn't been identified. Of the $1.9, about $500,000 is for the fringe benefits, and then $364,000 would be for the central services, $203,000 for department admin support, and for the division overhead is about $893,000.
That central services is what gets us every time?
Yes, it's always, actually, for this one, it's actually the division overhead.
Okay, all right. I think it's now, but that's what we need some clarification, because we found in the budget that there were several issues in which divisional and central services hiked the price up so high that we got very little product on the street for paying the overhead.
Yes, if you really want to have a, I guess the main thing would be the fringe benefits, and so if it's, we're only looking at the fringe benefit, which is the pension and the help, it would only be $500,000.
Now, are these positions that were cut and have disappeared, or are they positions that we're trying to maintain and not laying them off?
It would be positions that were cut in the budget, and so we're actually gonna not lay off about 20 bodies.
But these are, these are bodies in positions that were cut?
Yes.
So we're trying to hold on to those 20?
Yes.
Okay, very good. If you can just, for this comes back, it's some additional clarity, so we can be clear on what the overhead actually is. Colleagues, on this issue, I think, when we look at this, I think we just had an item that came before us, where we talked about the one-stop centers. And we brought up the point that there were a couple of places where one-stop centers were going, where the poverty level really didn't touch or give that level of exposure. And my request at the time is that as additional block grant money comes in, that we go back to the CDD poverty chart, and we use that as the guide, because that's what brings the money into the district. And when we see things, as we go through here, and we make judgments that the possibility of getting a 25% raise in the cap, when we've asked for that now for almost five years, and they've said no, that's about $2 million that's on the table that actually could make real projects go. And I think these are the kinds of things that are of concern when we have projects that are in waiting, and they're not getting consideration that we're going on a, on the come, that we may get this done. I think also, when we look at projects, as Ms. Han talked about, not supported her in the committee, when you have over 300 jobs on the Lancer site that's at least 30 years old, and you can get it done with an allocation of less than a million dollars additional, it would seem well worth that opportunity to make that happen in its entirety, as opposed to saying, give them a million dollars and let's just do a third of it. And so these are things, I think, when we're saying real jobs, and this whole shovel-ready thing, I think, needs some clarity for all of us, because some of us think it means you're ready to go today, some people think you can go buy property and it's down the road, and if you're going to have serious repercussions from the federal government, if you're not shovel-ready, we need to have done our research ahead of time to make sure these things are actually in the starting blocks, and we can complete them within the assigned time. And so I think these are the kind of things that all of us are concerned about. I certainly support Mr. Alakon, when we talk about when money is leaving poverty areas to other areas in the city, when we know that the block grant money comes on poverty, what we assure is that the poverty will continue, and we'll keep getting the money, and the poverty doesn't go away, but we benefit a larger group that may not have as much poverty. And buckets of poverty are not the same as having an entire district in poverty. And I think that's where we have to be considerate of how that money is distributed. So I would strongly support that we deal with this next week, where we can get this whole issue of evaluation of shovel-ready, and where we get times and dates and say what is actually going to occur, under what circumstances, when we verify and validate the number of jobs that are actually going to be created. And particularly, when you get something that's regional, that may impact two and three and four districts, that is something that we should be looking at, and particularly time-wise, if we have districts in which have projects that have been going and waiting and accumulating money for decades, we should, if we have an opportunity to complete them, this is something that should be on the top of our list. And so I would hope that some of that information all of us have asked comes back, so we can look at this list more thoroughly. $19 million is $19 million. If we spend it, you don't get another shot at it. And so that's what I would hope that we do.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Yeah, first, I want to thank Mr. Garcetti for having these meetings every Friday morning. I think it's been really helpful. And I want to thank you all here for moving as quickly as you do. You know, we get this notice, and we got to run through the clock, and we got to figure out where we can get the money. We obviously want it, we want as much money as we can get. There's like $100 million worth of requests for the $19 million. We're all fighting for our particular projects, a lot of it makes a lot of sense for us. So hats off to the work you all do first, okay? I have my little pet project, it's a big one, it's been around for 20 years, we've been talking about it forever, it's called Lincoln Place. We're this close to turning the corner on it, we're this close to modernizing, renovating 700 of the units and building another 100. It's a lot of jobs, but most importantly for me, it's the low-income and moderate-income average folks who will be able to go back into a project that is affordable housing on the West Side. People don't realize that one of the reasons my gridlock is beyond belief, is that people who aren't rich can't live in my district anymore, and that's wrong. And we need to get the federal government's support with that money I need, which is $4 million, closes the deal. 700 people will be able to come back, already 80 of them are coming back, poor folks, low-income folks, and then once the buildings are modernized and people are in, it goes back onto SRO. So it's a major plus project. It's housing, affordable housing, and it is also jobs. I'm not putting the heat on you, because there's a million projects lined up, and we need to find ways to do it, but I want to thank you for your work. We need more money out of the Obama administration for California, and I hope Mr. Garcetti's concern and my concern, we'll know next week where we're at, and what kind of monies we're talking about. But I again want to go on record, Lincoln Place. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. In terms of process and bigger picture, this is the first run of funding opportunities that has been afforded to us. Would that be accurate? When is the next round? Is there any indication, a way to look at, at our timeframes?
We don't have any further indication from her that there'll be a second round of our money.
Just hold my time. I'm sorry, one more time?
There is no indication from her that there'll be a second round of our money, but certainly the city's regular CDBG cycle will begin again at the latter part of this year.
Again, this is, this put on the table time, right? Let's get our concerns. And I said this in committee, and I want to repeat it. One is that our ability, the mechanisms that we're going to build into the city process to address this job creation, job development, how we focus on medium-sized businesses in these different projects, the link between the impoverished communities and the nexus between these funds and how we get these funds out into the street. The most mediums and small-sized businesses, I'm assuming will be interrelated with this job creation goal. But I learned the hard way, past 15 years, I sat on, as a deputy economic development committee, and what we learned is that many of the businesses do not have the technical expertise to deal with two to three reams of paperwork to actually get to the money, or learn how to use the money, how to qualify for the money. And that in itself hurts our ability to create jobs. Are we factoring that in at all in this process? And I'm not going to repeat to me what you said in committee, but I'd like for the record for you to share your thoughts on that.
Actually, Linda Smith, who's head of the city's minority business opportunity center, actually may be here in the room, she actually came to address specifically the mayor's vision related to small business assistance. There is a $250,000 allocation within the our budget that would go for her office and her staff to actually do the coordination citywide of all of the city's activities to outreach to those particular businesses.
So that's $250,000 we are asking for, to develop that capacity?
Correct.
Okay. On another level, and this is something about economic development in general, do you think for these funds, we will be able to have a certain level of coordination with the department heads to understand the property we already control, that's underused, that's dormant in the city, that can be entitled? I know in the River Corridor, in the Central City North area, the rail cycle-specific plan, we have four or five departments, a lot of parking lots, they don't share maintenance yards, there's a waste of airspace right next to the freeways, right near the river, and yet we can't get them to understand that if we thought differently, these properties can actually generate revenue for the city. Do you think we will ever get to a place, or is there any discussion with the department heads, that pushes them to promote this type of strategy?
Related to the budget before you, I don't think so. I think what you're talking about is a little more germane to the city's long-term strategic plan for economic development, which would be under the purview of Deputy Mayor Ovum. For this particular part, we were challenged to find projects that were really shovel-ready and ready to dig dirt within 120 days of funding becoming available to the city, which may put us at a November timeframe to actually start projects. But when we talk about how we're going to utilize lands over the next several years, I think that's a little bit more in terms of our long-term strategic plan, and I think Deputy Mayor Ovum would be better able to address that.
But there is a possibility that perhaps in the next round of funds, with the block grant, we could trigger scenarios that allows us to create jobs, because we already own the land. In some cases, they're already zoned for certain activity. It's a matter of bringing in partnerships and inviting the private sector to formulate these scenarios. Would that be accurate?
I would think so, but again, I think Deputy Mayor Ovum probably should address it more than I.
I look forward to meeting with him either here, in the horseshoe, or privately, but we need to line up those department heads and figure out what they're doing with their assets, their real estate, and really infuse a different vision about how we use our properties. Our city is in serious debt, we're sitting on valuable land, and we're doing absolutely nothing with it, and that has to change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Alakon, followed by Ms. Perry. Final speaker on the Q.
Members, I'll try to be toned down in terms of passion, but I want to get to the core issue that I am raising. What statistical analysis is attached to this report to demonstrate the equity of this distribution? Is there any?
The process that was employed, councilmember, was that we looked at the criteria that was outlined in the HUD guidelines, which basically suggested that the city programmed the money primarily toward hard development costs, and have projects that were ready to be initiated within a certain timeframe. We looked at all of the economic development projects that we were aware of within the city, and determined which ones that were the best, were best positioned to actually move forward, and which ones would generate the maximum amount of job opportunity and economic opportunity for the city. That's what--
Is that to say that there was no statistical analysis?
In terms of poverty, no.
Is this a poverty-driven program?
Low and moderate income, yes.
And there was no analysis of the poverty levels in the city of Los Angeles? Does CDB have poverty analysis?
It does.
And it wasn't deployed in the allocation of this money? Did anybody from CDB reach out to me and ask me if there were any projects that were shovel-ready?
No, David Asparza, Assistant General Manager of CDB--
Hold my time, please.
No, we did not.
How can you sit here and represent this? Hold my time, please, I'm waiting for an answer.
Time's being held, and we will hold the time till we get the answer.
We did an assessment of the shovel-ready nature of the projects and the jobs created. We did not look at it based upon distribution by census tract. We were looking at things, at projects and--
So how did you, how did you find these shovel-ready projects?
Many of them were presented by the representatives in this group, both from the council office, the mayor's office, and other--
So those that you chose to talk to?
Yeah. Councilman Steve Andrews from the mayor's office. The working team did go through a variety of conversations. There was a project from your district that was on the list, the Sun Valley Industrial Park, the Bradford landfill--
That is not in my district.
That, we, it was presented to be in your district, it turned out not to be--
That is not in my district.
I understand that.
That exemplifies how much you know about the geography of my district.
As I said, it was, it was presented as being in your district in the first scan--
It was presented by who, the councilman?
No, sir.
By who?
Projects came in from a variety of--
By who?
I don't know.
Councilmembers, this is a joke. If we do not reevaluate this and redistribute this money based on poverty statistics, it's a shame. It's a shame.
Isn't this, isn't this his deputy?
Shouldn't have to wait to the next allocation. Every allocation should have the same level of equity.
I was just told--
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Ms. Perry, our final speaker.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to read this into the record. This is a document entitled, "The American Recovery Investment Act: CDBG, Our Resources and Expenditures Footnotes." It's attachment one, and this is what I was referring to when I was asking Mr. Hollis the questions. On page two of the attachment, number 11, under Clean Tech Manufacturing Center, entitled, "Ansaldo-Brada Rail Car Manufacturing Facility," and it references Ansaldo-Brada, "leading supplier passenger trains for intercity regional commuter and trans-metro applications." So I just wanted to put that on the record, that I was actually, you know, basing my questions on a document that I had read. I'd also like to put forth a motion, and just put it out for your consideration, just as a contingency plan in the event that HUD denies our city's request to use 25% of CDBG recovery funds for public services. I wanted to make a motion requesting that the CDBG Recovery Working Group return to council with recommendations to reduce public services expenditures to 15%, and to program the resulting funds to offset a potential expenditure reduction. And in addition to that, I'd also like to ask the CAO, with the involvement of the Community Development Department, to monitor recommended projects for funding and maintain a list of projects that could be substituted, should the proposed projects not meet deadlines for expenditure. I wanted to put that out there and to see if I could get a second, is there any?
Second by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Weezer?
Yes, and if I could ask for a report back, that if you could come back with an analysis, that assuming, you know, Ansaldo-Brada, or however you pronounce that, is not a selected tenant for the Clean Tech Manufacturing Site, assuming they're not a tenant, would this site still qualify for funding under this plan to move forward for whatever tenant is selected? We need that analysis, because I think that that whole thing is muddling up this thing, and we got to move forward with this site irrespective of who the tenant is. Thanks. and we've got to move forward with this site irrespective of who the tenant is.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all colleagues. I will formally move to continue until Tuesday. It's based on a number of the questions. This is due June 5th, so we have to get it in by... What day is the 5th? The day of the week, is that Wednesday? What day is the 5th?
The 5th is Friday.
Right, sorry. So by next Friday, we have to get it in. But I'd move... Yes, I do want to make sure we have time to write it, though. So is it based on anything in particular?
I'm not here on Tuesday, and given that, you know, there's some question as to some projects in my district, I would like to be part of that discussion.
Let me check attendance, too, because we might have the opposite for some folks as well. So we'll continue till Tuesday for now, but we'll make sure that we can continue beyond Wednesday, in case folks that aren't going to be here Wednesday but are here Tuesday as well have a chance to discuss that, and we can have that drafted up. And we'll see if the state gives us any further information on the housing projects. You have one, I have one, and Mr. Reyes has one as well. There's a number of those housing development projects. We'll hear whether there's state money available. If it's not, we can't use this federal money to move forward because we have to move that to something else. So we'll keep our fingers crossed, but that'll give us more information as we look at everything as well. And we can get some of those questions answered, and hopefully get some feedback from the local HUD office on the 1525 strategy. Okay? That'll be my recommendation. Thank you.
All right, without objection, Mr. Clerk.
And that'll be continued to Tuesday.
All right.
Why don't we ask council members if anybody has objection to Wednesday? Or staff, do you have objections for Wednesday?
Well, we have it now continued to Tuesday. We want to continue it to Wednesday, the will of the council.
Anybody okay?
Mr. Garcetti's checking attendance for next week. We can schedule for Tuesday and then continue it to Wednesday if we need.
Okay. Wednesday would be fine, says the council president.
All right, so we'll do it on Wednesday.
Thank you very much.
Move this to Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Wezar. All right, it'll be continued to Wednesday. Thank you. Mr. Rosenoff?
Yes, I'd like to reconsider item number five, please, that was on consent.
Number five? Number five, without opposition, will reconsider that matter? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that matter will be reconsidered.
I would just like to make a verbal motion amending it. Go back to committee.
Mr. Rosenoff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like us, when we reconsider item number five, city attorney, and add recommendation to instruct the Housing Department to set aside $4 million in home funds for the Lincoln Place Project. It becomes a placeholder, talked to Mr. Garcetti about it from the housing thing, and I'd like to have that reconsidered, and I'd like that motion seconded. Do I have a second for that motion?
Mr. Reyes?
Second by Mr. Reyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Matter's now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Mr. Rosenoff. Next item, please.
Item 10 was called special for cards, and there is an amending motion that has been circulated.
Number 10. Mr. Matt Dowd, Mr. Zuma Dogg, down in San Pedro.
This is Zuma Dogg for city council once again. Okay, come on, go ahead, you're first, Matt.
Thank you. We got a clarification, so you could tell Officer Johnson down there that we're together, we're allowed our supporters to stand here. Anyway, this one, 1.9 million, it looks like Wendy's district, and because she actually won the election into a city controller, unlike Jack Weiss. But this is going to cost 1.9 million, it's a special election, it'll be a number of people. Zuma Dogg's probably running for this one. And, you know, I give my support to him running, but yeah, this is a special runoff election, December 8, people, so Channel 35, you're watching, make sure you vote in this one. I think Zuma Dogg's going to be running. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Yes, thank you, Los Angeles. We have a real opportunity here for the people to take back the city. Wendy Gruel, through her massive fundraising, has become city controller, so we're going to have a new city council election. What happens is, starting in July, you can get the nominating petitions. I do believe the election's going to be in October. Chance for the people's grassroots, we need to take back the city. There is a council seat, a Los Angeles City Council seat, up for sale, people. I hear you need up to $1 million, and I think that, you know, people ask me if I want to run, and to be honest with you, I really don't want to be a despicable puppet city council member. They're such small potatoes, they all sicken me. Why would I want to be a part of something that sickens me so much? You can't do anything good, everything's bad. I don't know how, I couldn't live with myself to be a city council member, but I need a job. In case people don't know, I am homeless, I sleep on the streets, and so they're like, gee, Zuma Dogg, what are you, crazy? So I might run, or we need to get behind a good candidate. And if people go to zumatimes.com, I'll be starting a grassroots effort, we need to back a candidate. So what I'm here to say, we got 14 people, many of them that may be under federal investigation as we speak, and the reason, let's talk about why we need to take back this council district from the Zuma Dogg candidate, that will be determined. The number one thing, we must get control of the pension board. It's been clearly established that Maritonio Viragosa, through his commission appointments, through his money backing, they take the pension money, they funnel it into their risky projects, and Zuma Dogg is sitting... Oh, it sounds like I'm not going to be able to stop myself, because I've already said Zuma Dogg is sitting...
Mr. President, he's not talking about his elections, I think, not on...
Put that couple of... ...here it goes, out of there, and all his commissioner appointments. Zuma Dogg will be the watchdog.
I think he's off the target on this one.
What?
I think you're off the target on this matter.
No, this is CD, this is...
Mr. City Attorney?
He is once again off topic.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zuma Dogg. That completes that matter. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, we have our city clerk here, June Legme, who is here to discuss and answer any questions. I asked her to come to the table because I think it's important for our elections to have as open and public a process as possible, and we appreciate all the hard work that you've done and your staff has done as well on moving this forward for a runoff election in Council District Two to succeed Ms. Gruel, and to do that in a way that will hopefully get people out and get people involved and to move that forward as well. Can you just walk the council a little bit through the timeline here of what the first, you know, of what the timeline is that we're approving here today, and when the special election primary, which could be the last election if somebody gets 50% plus one, and/or then the runoff would be for this election?
June Legme, City Clerk's office, and sitting with me is Arlene Taylor, our Elections Chief. We have tried to prepare for council an item so that you may set a special election. The primary would be set on Tuesday, September 22nd, and the runoff, if necessary, would be set on Tuesday, December 8th. These are not dates that were arbitrarily pulled, but were crafted very carefully, taking into account the election code, the amount of days necessary for canvassing, holidays going into the holiday season, keeping in mind also that we wanted to offer it to the council to place the primary as soon as possible, and also taking into consideration the advice of the city attorney that certain criteria and provisions had to be provided for, being that the current councilwoman of CD Two is moving on to controller and needs to resign herself from that position in order for this scheduling to happen. We, in the ordinance, are laid out certain dates, such as if the council agrees to hold the primary on September 22nd. The first day to file the declaration of intention would then be July 6th. The last day would be July 11th. The first day to obtain nominating petitions is also that same day, and an entire schedule has been developed, avoiding holidays. For further details, I'm going to hand it over to Arlene.
In terms of the, for somebody out there who'd be interested in running, and I guess, let me ask you one question actually before the details of that. The city council has another option besides holding an election, correct? And what would that be?
Of course, they can exercise their option to appoint somebody to have the seat. It is totally the council's prerogative to decide to do that or to open up to a special election, which does cost, however, it has the effect, the consequence of allowing the constituency of that district to vote for its member.
Correct. So for members of public that are out there, the council does have the power to appoint somebody for the remainder of Ms. Gruel's term, which would go through June 30th of 2011, and it certainly is the cheapest route, because we're looking at about a $1.8 million cost for an election.
That's correct, $1.8 million.
But I think the council, unless anybody feels differently, believes very much in people's right to choose, and even in a tough budget year like this year, to move forward with an election. And I know there was some buzz out there earlier on that we were going to appoint somebody. I certainly had no intention to. I've never heard that out of a council member's mouth as well, and democracy is not cheap, but it is the most critical thing that we do. So obviously, moving forward for the residents of the second council district to have that plan to elect their representative is what we're talking about moving forward here today and what our vote would do. But I want to make clear to the public that we do have that power to also appoint, and that would have been a cheaper option in a very tough budget year. In terms of the folks then that want to file, they have to live for how many days in the second council district?
They must have resided within the second council district at least 30 days prior to the first date of candidate filing.
Which is July 6.
Which is July 6, which means by June 6, they must have been a resident of Council District Two.
All right. And unlike some other seats where you don't have to live in your district, like Congress and other things, we in the city require you to live in the district that you represent for 30 days prior to that intention.
That's correct.
Okay. And then there will be those five days, then from July 6th to July 11th, to file a declaration of intent to run?
What, six days counting, Monday through Saturday?
Six days with that, okay. And then, and then what's the process if, once they've put that forward, if somebody then would like to take the next step after they've said they're going to run?
Okay. Once a candidate files their declaration of intention to become a candidate, they must also file with ethics the necessary documents. Once they provide us proof that they have done so, we can give them nominating petitions. Candidates can then go to residents, registered voters, rather, within Council District Two and obtain either 500 valid signatures and pay a $300 filing fee to run, or in lieu of the filing fee, they can submit 1,000 qualified signatures from registered voters.
And they're able to collect double that number in each category, because some of them will be probably tossed out as invalid, that's your experience?
That's correct.
Okay. So they can collect 1,000 to get 500 legitimate ones, or 2,000 for 1,000 legitimate ones?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, when we look at, we call it a primary, but I mentioned in the opening, but the special election then would be held September 22nd. Walk us through the two scenarios depending on the outcome. If somebody gets more than 50% of the vote, what happens versus what happens if someone does not?
On September 22nd, if a candidate receives more than half of the votes, so 50% plus one, they will then be certified as having won that election. After, we go through a review of all the vote-by-mails that were dropped off, you know, the normal canvas procedures that, we're given 21 days to complete, we can certify the election results to council, and they can declare a winner. However, if no single candidate gets the majority, then there will be a runoff election, and we're proposing the December 8th date for that.
Okay. All right, colleagues, that December 8th day, we had some conversations earlier, because we were looking at, you know, is November a better date and stuff? It's my recommendation that we stick with the December 8th date, just because it allows... Mr. Labonj had this experience, I think, in your election, that there was only about 30 or 40 days, 40-something days, 42 days between the primary and the runoff. It was a pretty quick turnaround, right? It was the next month, and it was tough, I know, for the city clerk's office to certify the first one to get to the second one. This allows enough time to make sure if there's any hiccups or a very closely contested election, that they'll have enough time to make sure that people have the ballot in their hands a month ahead of time at home, and be able to have that translated into all the proper languages for runoff. December, it's going to be incumbent upon all of us, even those not in CD Two, to remind folks to vote, to not have this be a super-low turnout election, but we'll do our best, and I know the city clerk's office will do their best as well. So thank you, colleagues, for indulging me as we walk through this. I know we know this because we've all done this before, but I think it's very important for the public to know that and to do that in as transparent and open a way as we can. So it's my recommendation to move this forward today so that we can adopt the ordinance calling for the September 22nd special election primary and December 8th runoff for the Council District Two seat. Thank you.
And there is no voter fatigue, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Rosenoff?
Yes, I just want to rise and thank Mr. Garcetti. You know, West Hollywood and Santa Monica had deaths on their city council, and they went ahead among themselves and set up criteria, and I'm sure they picked two very qualified people. But frankly, the democracy means the people, and the fact that you just took that leadership right out the gate, we could have appointed somebody to replace Wendy, but the people put us at these tables and at these desks right now, and I applaud you for that kind of leadership, because the people in the second district need to have a robust political process. You know, our election system is broken, incumbents win automatically, basically. The only real races are when there are open seats, like I went through four years ago, and that's part of the problem, but we can't solve that standing here today. But what we can solve here is giving the people in the second district a real voice, let them make that decision. It does cost money, but the democracy costs money. None of these deals of appointing somebody. Let the politics happen, let these candidates get out there and show folks why they should come on to the city council. I just want to make that comment. Thank you so much for that leadership, and yes, we should vote yes on this. September 22nd should be the first vote, and then it'll probably be a runoff in December. And to anybody who's thinking of running in that district, you only got a few more days before you can't move in. No carpetbaggers, by the way, I don't like them anyhow. I think people should be living in their districts and understanding their districts. But hats off, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenoff. Mr. Labonj?
Thank you. What is the date in December?
December 8th.
Is there any holidays that would be in that period of time for people? Could you look at the calendar?
Do you want to ask the... There are holidays preceding and following that date, but...
Like, what, the day before, or...
Thank you. You have Hanukkah following?
Afterwards, after the December...
12, December 12th to the 19th.
Everything's post the date of, there would be the general election. Everything, the general election is when?
December 8th.
And everything post that, after that is any holidays?
We're at the Hanukkah, Christmas.
So there's no early holiday that would conflict with the election?
Not that we saw when we checked.
No, we saw when you checked. Okay, good. All right. And now, members, I want to thank the clerk and the Election Division for this year. And Mr. Garcetti, I want to thank you as well. As Mr. Rosenoff said, it's a robust democratic process. I think my seat was, Mr. Parks was the last special election, the Ace District, I think, was the last special election of this council here. The last time anyone is appointed to city council, you know when that is, Madam Clerk?
What, the CD seven? There was Faro that was replaced.
Yeah, 1966, John Faro, who these chambers are named after, but I think it's important to have an election for that. Prior to that, Mr. Faro was the city commissioner for almost 20 years, and has his knowledge of the area. But I think nowadays, it's absolutely important to have an election. So we have an election, and I know in between that election, Mr. Garcetti, you direct the legislative analyst to have a caretaker for the second district. Could you explain that? Because I think the public should hear that importance, and I know Mr. Kat...
Thank you, Mr. Labonj. Mr. Garcetti, for the explanation of caretakers.
I haven't finished, Mr. President.
Well, you just called upon him to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a period of time in which there will be no council member in the second council district, either appointed or elected, between July 1st and sometime as early as probably October, or as late as sometime in December, or even January, the very beginning of January, depending on how things go. During that time, all residents of the second council district will first, even before the caretaker, Mr. Labonj, will have a council district two staff that is there, answering calls, taking care of constituent concerns. The folks that Ms. Gruel hired will be able to stay on. A number of them will be able to take care of all those concerns. Legislatively, and anything requiring what the council member would normally have to sign off on, there is somebody appointed by our chief legislative analyst's office to be the caretaker for that, well, it's appointed by council, but from the chief legislative analyst's office, who will be that caretaker. Each one of us have had caretakers, I think, in our council districts at different times. It's most often been Avak Katoriyan, who's right here, or someplace, he's right there. He's hiding because he doesn't want to be a council member yet again, but he's done it for seven or eight different districts, I believe. And/or we could appoint somebody else as a caretaker, but we're able to have a caretaker in place for those, a period of months, so that the residents of Council District Two will not be powerless and will have equal representation for any signatures and other things that they need.
Thank you, Mr. Labonj. Anything else on that matter? Thank you. Okay, that gives the explanation. Anything else in the clerk's office?
No.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, on that matter, shall we open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much.[1789.01] Thank you very much.
And the ordinance will go over one week.
Yes. Second reading next week. Next item, please.
Item 12 was called special for an amending motion that has now been circulated.
Item number 12?
As amended.
As amended. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 13, called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, number 13.
Could we ask Law to come on up to the desk on this? Ms. Hahn wanted to make sure she went to her fish lunch in San Pedro, and she is chair of the Oversight Committee on LAX. We noticed the position, a situation. If you could explain it to us, I'd be most grateful.
Yes, sir. Samson, I guess to Los Angeles World Airport. The item before you is a reexemption of a deputy general manager position. This is not a new position. It's a, the incumbent has announced that he's leaving the city, so we're anticipating a vacancy, and every time there's a vacancy, the charter requires that we go through this reexemption process.
And so why do we, we like it to be exempt? Why? Explain that. Because that brings in with the general manager the opportunity to hire people, or what?
Councilmember, this was previously exempt position, so...
I'm sorry, what?
This was previously exempt position. We would like to continue the exempt status, and it's a requirement that every time there's a vacancy, we have to go through this process.
And what is an exempt position different from another position? Explain that.
That is, aside from civil service, where there's no examination required, it allows the executive director to do a search and recruitment and be able to hire.
To hire without the civil service situation?
That is correct.
And then that person serves at the pleasure of the general manager?
That is correct.
And no civil service protection at that?
That is correct.
How many positions are exempt that come in with the general manager of the airport?
We have, all in all, about 18 exempt positions.
Eighteen. So this is routine? You need to do it every time somebody retires, so it becomes an open spot and the general manager then can fill it?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you so much for that information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Labonge?
I rise to support this matter. Now call for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. The final speaker. Matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Tabulation.
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much. Fourth with on that. Thank you, Samson, for your testimony today.
Four and five fourth with.
There's cards on 12? Thank you for telling me. Matt Dowd? All right, then, open it, reconsider. We have two cards on number 12. Just informed of that, so open the rolls for reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, matter's now being reconsidered. We have two public speaking cards. Mr. Matt Dowd and Mr. Zuma-Dog in San Pedro. On number 12, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Council President Acting Dennis Zein for the extra consideration. I'm wondering if William H. Jackson has resigned yet. I gotta check online after I get out the meeting. He's, he's one of the mayor's people inside the CRA responsible for funneling a lot of this money out of these projects, and they don't end up making it where they're supposed to go. You know, we were right on so many things, and yet here's more money that's going through the center. It all sounds good, you know, homeless services and affordable this and affordable that, and all we care about is the money that's allocated for these projects makes it to the street, and those jobs are created, and the money isn't sucked up by these front-end loaded management contracts, consulting fees. Let's do a study on this and a study on that, and all the money disappears, and these kids are going to be homeless, and there's no affordable housing because these projects turn out to be non-affordable. Because by the time you waste all the money in the beginning, then you get to the end of the project, you run out of money, and then a whole lot of time goes by, and by the time you get the money to finish the project, it's not affordable anymore. So William H. Jackson, the CRA, a lot of trouble. He needs to step down. We talked about the mayor's appointments and how he's running away with the city. He's definitely not going to be the governor of California. He's definitely finished in this town. In fact, I even hear he's getting a bulletproof car now, the mayor. That's how popular he is.
Thank you. Zuma-Dog, you have one minute on the clock on this matter. One minute, Zuma-Dog.
Okay, here, hold the camera, Matt.
You're on your time. One minute.
Yes, we're talking about the CRA, and first of all, I demand city council, before you approve this, William H. Jackson, Weatherly Capital attorney, under investigation Weatherly Capital is by the SEC, Vera Gosa appointed him CRA, and I do not trust any project with William H. Jackson as chairman. Weatherly Capital's in big trouble. You can't have Weatherly Capital's attorney be chairman of the CRA. I think the council members know why. Now we're talking about emergency shelter services. You know, hey, all you did is build upscale housing all over the place. There was plenty of affordable housing you should have built. You totally ignored it, and now you have to have emergency shelter and housing. And although Zuma-Dog has been calling for that, let me just say why. We're about to have all hell breaks loose on the streets, and you need more emergency housing and shelter. You're going to have a wave of homelessness. Zuma-Dog came in here three years ago out of nowhere and said you're going to have to call out the National Guard for the wave of homelessness and your new emergency shelter, and we need to do it, but you cannot have William H. Jackson as chairman.
Thank you. Zuma-Dog, your minute is up. Thank you. Number, on that matter, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Number 16, fourth with, please.
Actually, Mr. President, the amending motion just came across the desk on 16. Would you like to reconsider that?
All right, open the roll to reconsider number 16. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. It's not an amending. It don't reconsider. Now we're being told it's not. I wish we would know the accuracy. We're going to reconsider. We're not going to reconsider. We're going to stand it as it was? Okay, we're not making a change. Leave 23 as was, as is. No modification of 23. I'm sorry, 16. 16, fourth with. All right, now we're going to 23.
Actually, you still have missed, Mr. President, you have item 14 still before you.
14, open the roll.
That was called special by Councilmember Alacon.
Is there any question?
There's no, there's, Mr. Alacon, is he, is he here? We've got San Pedro on number 14, but there was a request to go to 23, but let's do what? Mr. Alacon?
Members, this is the update on the status of the bankruptcy situation with the Children's Museum. I'd like to ask the city attorney's representatives to step forward and give us a brief understanding of what the current status is. Also, I understand Recreation and Parks and the CAO are available for this? And the CLA? Members, this shouldn't take very long. We just want to keep you informed. This is a citywide project.
Marcy Gonzalez Kimbrough, Deputy City Attorney. A couple of weeks ago, different staff of the city departments, Wreckon Parks, the mayor's office, Bureau of Engineering, CLA, and perhaps some other representatives of the city met with the bankruptcy trustee, actually, at the site of the Children's Museum. The bankruptcy trustee toured the site. We had very fruitful discussions about the need for, or his appreciation for the need for adequate security of the site, given the city's financial investment and the value of the asset. And the attorney, Wendy Liu, in our office, who's the bankruptcy attorney, is on her way back to council chambers, but it's my understanding that, in her opinion, the bankruptcy trustee is carrying out adequately his fiduciary duty to protect the asset. There is 24-hour live security guard on site. The site is fenced, and there is insurance, as far as we know, that is on the site privately, private paid insurance that had actually been paid by the museum. So in the bankruptcy attorney's opinion, the trustee is actually protecting the asset adequately, and there has been a conference, I believe, between the trustee and the other creditors. There may be two claims filed on that bankruptcy proceeding against the Children's Museum, the Children's Museum bankruptcy proceeding. One is, I believe one is from a donor, and I don't recall who the other potential claim would be from, but the bankruptcy proceedings are going along schedule, and there isn't any real action that the city can take at this point, given that the trustee is proceeding
Members, this, the bankruptcy proceedings will come to a head in a very short period of time, perhaps less than 30 days, and we'll have a lot more information at that time. So this is just a small bit of information. We anticipate that we'll have a lot more within a month. Until that time, we, really, it's difficult to contemplate any future use for the site until we know what the bankruptcy court decides. So with that, I'd like to ask, I'd like to continue this matter and have it come back to the council on June 19. Mr. Alacon, we do have two speaker cards, but only one speaker because the other one has used up their time, so I'll offer them the opportunity to comment on the record since they prepared a card on this item. One minute left for Mr. Dowd. All right, Mr. Matthew Dowd has one minute left, and Mr. Zuma-Dog has used up all his time for today. Mr. Dowd?
Come here, bro.
Okay, Matt Dowd.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. I hear him. There he is.
Yes, I'll try and be like Councilman Alacon and tone down my comments, but it's going to be tough because I see him down there getting all upset about federal money that's not going to his district, and he's jumping up and down, yet he's poured money into this project and he knew it was going to fail. He poured funds. He took out, he said it was a loan. He swore it was a loan, and he already knew this was going to go bankrupt. The Children's Museum, he's being very quiet about it right now. It's like, oh, no, we don't have any more information. Yeah, there's more information. You put money into this, and you already knew it was going to go bankrupt. It's one of the things that we don't like about you. You know, we warned this was a belly-up project. It's out on the public record, and now you notice, Mr. Alacon, very quiet, and yet he's all upset, and he wonders why we get upset when we get violated.
Thank you very much. Okay. Please open the roll on that.
Madam President, the record continued this to June 19.
All right, so that'll be without objection. What is our next item?
Madam President, there is a request to reconsider item 16 for the amending motion that was circulated.
Okay, and there doesn't appear to be any objection to reconsideration on item 16, so would you please open the roll on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
And now the amending, the item as amended would be before you.
All right, again, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next item?
That leaves item 23, called special for cards, and a motion is required on this.
And for the record, Madam President, this item is a fair hearing matter requiring the council members' heightened attention to the speakers. All right, and I would like to ask all members to please take their seats and give their heightened attention to this matter as this is considered to be a fair hearing or quasi-judicial proceeding. So if you could please take your seats. I have three cards on this matter, and I will call their names in order. First speaker is Keith Hardgrove, followed by Donna Black, followed by Fred Gaines.
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Kenneth Hardgrove. I'm here today on behalf of the appellant, John Douglas. Mr. Douglas lives on Stone Canyon Road. His property, his home, his property is located directly to the south of the project site and abuts the project site. Stone Canyon Creek, which is a natural year-round stream, runs on the project site from north to south, the full length of the property, and then flows on to Mr. Douglas's property. What is here before you today? I have two issues I'd like to raise quickly for you. The first is a procedural matter. Mr. Douglas was never provided with notice as required by law of the haul route permit application hearing. That hearing was on April 21. Attached as Exhibit B to our appeal brief dated May 1, 2009, is the certified list of owners and tenants. Although you will note that it says John John Douglas on there, it lists an address in Santa Monica, California, that if you check, and we have, is a non-existent address. Mr. Douglas resides on Stone Canyon Road. On that basis alone, I would ask the city council to grant the appeal, to deny the haul route application, and to fail at this time to approve of the MND that was approved by the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners on April 21, 2009. If for whatever reason you fail to act in that manner, I would submit to you that that haul route application was granted and the MND was issued based upon the representation by the owner that there would be no attempt made to bury, alter, or disturb Stone Canyon Creek. If you will look at Exhibit A to our brief dated May 1, you will note...
Thank you, Mr. Hardgrove. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donna Black.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Donna Black. I'm appearing today on behalf of Janice and Henri Lazaroff, the appellants, who live adjacent to the property, which is the subject of this appeal. We respectfully request that you overturn the approval by Building and Safety of a haul route for approximately 8,000 cubic yards of dirt, a decision made prior to the approval of a grading permit, and while a parcel map modification request is pending that would significantly change the project. 8,000 cubic yards is far in excess of the excavation graded needing for the one house currently shown on the project plans. Allowing unnecessary grading is a particular problem for my clients for at least five major reasons. First, there are a number of large, mature trees and hedges, some of which are 80 to 100 years old, located on the Lazaroff's property, which grow very close to the joint common boundary, and the root systems extend onto both properties. Grading will inevitably destroy some of these trees and hedges, and although there is a condition requiring replacement trees on the subject site, if any are destroyed, there's no such provision for replacement trees on the adjacent site. Second, there are several large stone steps and other stonework that cannot be duplicated that continues from the Lazaroff's property down to the noles and hills on the subject site that will likely be destroyed as a result of the massive retaining wall required to stabilize the slope leading up to the Lazaroff property. It's located above the subject property. Third, there's heavy-duty jacuzzi equipment connected to underground pipes located within a few feet of the joint property line, a nearby swimming pool, extensive underground splinking systems, and an electric wiring system that supports lighting throughout the property that could be seriously damaged by grading activities. Based on the foregoing, if the haul route appeal is not granted, we respectfully request that no hauling be allowed until after a decision is made on the parcel map modification. That modification, which would allow the applicant to pave over Stone Canyon Creek, is denied, then the quantity of dirt allowed to be hauled should be reevaluated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Black. Mr. Fred Gaines?
Thank you very much, Madam President, honorable members. Fred Gaines of Law Office of Gaines and Stacy, on behalf of the property owner. This is a haul route approval that's in front of you. As you just heard the testimony, if you look at the documentation that's invited you, there is no comment on the haul route. You're to determine whether or not the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners properly approved a route for hauling the grading off the site, and there's no comment about the route. The neighbors who are trying to delay or stop my client from building a house on their four-acre lot in Bel Air have come up with a laundry list of items, as you just heard. None of them have to do with the haul route. You should know that in the parcel map that was previously approved for the property, there are conditions relating to the trees and the geology and the grading and a buffer zone from the creek, all of which have been complied with in the plans that are in front of you, that actually are not in front of you, but the plans that have been submitted to the city separately to build the house. No variance is required. No variance is required. The house, the retaining wall, the amount of grading, all of it is within the allowed parameters of the code, including the hillside provision, the new retaining wall ordinance. The only thing in front of you is whether or not the proposal to haul this material in a certain route has been properly approved by the Building and Safety Commission. It has. There's not even an argument that it hasn't, and the appeal should be denied. Mr. Hardgrove, on behalf of his client, shows up at every hearing and claims he doesn't have notice. You have 20 or 30 pages of material from him. He's appeared at every hearing, yet he continues to claim that he has notice, and the claim, frankly, is ridiculous, given his full, his client's full participation in all aspects of the original proceeding plus this appeal. The appeal should be denied. It is baseless. The haul route was properly approved by the Building and Safety Commission. Thank you very much for your consideration of the matter.
Thank you very much. That ends our public hearing portion on this matter. Mr. City Attorney, I don't have any speakers in the queue. I'd like to get some recommendation, guidance from you. Hold on a second. Did you want to say something, Mr. Weiss?
I move to deny the appeal.
Okay, can you say that? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Deny the appeal. Approve the, approve the decision below of the Building and Safety Commission.
Did that, did anyone hear that?
Yes. You move to deny the appeal.
Before, let's see if I push my button here. What was done was done within the jurisdiction of Building and Safety, that it's a legitimate haul route, which will have impact, but that's the best way we have to do it, and it's a legitimate haul route to allow this property to proceed with development based on the findings of Building and Safety.
That's right, Mr. Labonge. And also, and as you know, because you've got hillside areas where these issues come up as well, the disputes that occur, in my view, are frankly oftentimes, and Mr. Weezer has them as well, he has hillsides, they are more often than not really about the underlying project themselves. That's what motivates a lot of the disputes. When it comes to haul routes, all we can do is routing. It's, we can't tell people they can't build. We just, it's about what streets get used for the trucks going in and out, and that's why it's deferred to Building and Safety.
If it's possible, et cetera. Sign it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next item?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused Tuesday, June 2 for city business. That meets council policy.
All right, without objection.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused Tuesday, June 9 to leave at 12:30 for personal business. That meets council policy.
Without objection.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused June 2, 17, and 19 for personal business and to leave at 11:30 on June 9, and to leave at 11:45 on June 23 for city business. All meet council policy.
All right, but I guess that's without objection if I can without object to myself?
And Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused June 23, 24, and 30 for personal business. That meets council policy.
All right, without objection.
That will clear the desk.
Okay, members, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Any, no announcements? All right, if we could all please rise for any adjourning tributes. Mr. Weezer, to begin.
Madam President, colleagues asked that we adjourn in the memory of Ronald Takaki. Mr. Takaki, Professor Takakis is a professor emeritus of ethnic studies at the University of California, Berkeley, and a prolific scholar of U.S. race relations, who taught UC's first black history course. He died at his home in Berkeley on Tuesday, May 26. He was 70 and had struggled for nearly 20 years with multiple sclerosis. During his more than four decades at UC Berkeley, Takaki joined the free speech movement, established the nation's first ethnic studies PhD program, as well as Berkeley's American Cultures requirement for graduation, and advised President Clinton in 1987 on his major speech on race. I knew Mr. Takaki as a Chicano Studies major at UC Berkeley, and certainly the whole campus, and certainly all of academia looked to Mr. Takaki, Professor Takaki, when it came to race relations. And if we look at a new, what had just happened here in the United States with a new African-American president, you know that a lot of the scholars who are commenting on that new, how race relations affected our, the voting on our new president, a lot of these people have had some influence on either the writings, the teachings, or the discussions that Professor Takaki has had. He is a descendant of Japanese plantation workers in Hawaii. He left the islands in the late 1950s to study at Ohio's College of Worcester, where he earned a bachelor's degree. He went on to earn a PhD in American history from UC Berkeley in 1967. He, his dissertation was on the history of American slavery, and he was hired at UCLA, where he taught the campus's first black history course. He joined Berkeley's Ethnic Studies Department in 1971 and served as chair from 1975 to 1977. Among his numerous accolades for scholarship and activism, Takaki received a Pulitzer nomination for his book, "A Different Mirror: A History of Multicultural America." A distinguished teaching award from UC Berkeley he received in 2003, and a Fred Cody Award for Lifetime Achievement from the Bay Area Book Reviewers Association. He is survived by his wife Carol, his three children, and his grandchildren. Plans for a campus memorial service are pending. I ask that we all adjourn in his memory.
Would you like all members on that, Mr. Weezer?
All members, please.
All members on that, then. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Robert Lamar Rodwell. He was born in 1981, passed away on Wednesday, May 13, 2009. He attended George Washington Preparatory High School, also, but he graduated from Lou Sanger in Hawthorne in 1999. He had a love for music. He was a talented drummer. He made history by becoming, becoming the only one of four drummers from California to play in the Santa Clara Vanguard Drum and Bugle Corps, a national traveling band which had won many competitions in his highly regarded. At the age of 22, he shared his love and passion for music with a new generation of up-and-coming drummers in Washington and also View Park Prep Middle School. Children meant a great deal to him, and throughout his life, he ensured that they also had a love of music. He was, also brought music to his own family. He was recently the victim of a homicide on May 13 at approximately 9:21 PM, where he was shot and killed, as he said, as a passenger in his vehicle at 1436 West 105th Street near Vermont. This is being investigated by the sheriffs, LA County Sheriff's, homicide bureau. Anyone having information, certainly we'd hope that they call 323-890-5577. Just, his funeral services were held Saturday, May 23. I'll show you what a small world it is. We had a staff meeting at one of our offices at Crenshaw, and went over across the street to a restaurant, and his mom works in the restaurant where she provided the wanted bulletin in his, his obituary, but it just goes to show that she had gotten home that day and within a few minutes had seen him, that he was killed on the street, and so we asked...
Mr. Parks, I'd like to second that one.
Adjourn in, in Robert's memory.
Any adjourning motions? Any additional adjourning motions? All right, with that, Mr. Clerk, if you would call the roll. Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.